All rise. I guess this county commission meeting in Sumner County is now open to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. To present our implication tonight is Pastor Todd Alexander from the House of Grace Assembly of God, 600 Lot 4, Row here in Gallatin. He became an ordained minister at Memphis after serving four years with the U.S. Marines. He's involved in full-time ministry for more than twenty years. Recently served as Executive Secretary of Treasurer for the Tennessee District Assembly of God. He has been the senior pastor of House of Grace Church for three years. He and his wife, Sherry, have two grown children. Pastor Alexander?
Let's pray together. Almighty God, we recognize you as our Creator and Father of all mankind. Father, tonight we look to your word, which tells us that all authority has been set in place by you. And because of that, Paul told Timothy that we should pray for our leaders. Pray for those in authority over us. So, Father, we do that tonight. We thank you, God, for the commissioners and leaders that you have placed over us in Sumner County. We ask you, God, to bless them and to give them wisdom, Father, and unity of spirit and heart, God, tonight in this meeting. Father, we ask that Psalm nineteen would be our guide tonight, that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart would be acceptable in your sight. Oh, Lord, my strength and my Redeemer, let your presence be made known in this place tonight. We pray all these things in your wonderful name. Amen.
Would you please remain standing as our clerk, Mr. Kemp, lives in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I call the row, please? Row calls now open. Each commissioner, please report your presence. All twenty-four members are present, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Next is the approval of the regular agenda. I do want to make some modifications without objection. First, I would like to move the certificates of recognition before the recognition of the public. And would also like to remove the General Sessions Judge. I think all of you know that we'll be doing that in March. We're going to defer that to the March meeting. Also add, under number nine C, the approval of the consent agenda. That was left off, so we will need to approve the consent agenda. Then on the second page, under Budget Committee, I would like to move number seven and eight to number one and two. That would be at the beginning of the Budget Committee presentation. Do I hear a motion? Have a motion moved, Paulson? Have a second?
Say.
Second by Mr. Paris. All those in favor say aye. We have an agenda. Has your... Yes, sir.
Just a little patient. I'm getting the item numbers on the last meeting. So fifteen and twelve. Just post it down.
Fifteen oh two oh eight and fifteen oh two oh nine, but they were items number seven and that. Right, okay. Got you. Approval of the minutes for January the twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. Do I hear a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Aiken, is there a second?
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Cmenton. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're ready for certificates of recognition. And our first certificate of recognition was presented by Commissioner Jared Foster to the Sumner County Sheriff's Office for earning the man award. And let me just say, as they come forward, those from the sheriff's department who are going to accept this reward, this is like the fourth time in the last five or six months that we have given an award out to the sheriff's department. And I just want to congratulate the sheriff and his staff for the outstanding job that they do for Sumner County. This is certainly a very prestigious award that they're going to receive. Commissioner Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sergeant Pickard, Deputy Sipper, if I can go on a little bit, please. Sheriff?
The Sheriff Decker mentioned this is a prestigious award, but it's continuing on the heels of a lot of successes that the sheriff's office had last year. In two thousand and fourteen, the sheriff's office won the Governor Tyler Safety Award, Challenge for Agencies in Their Size. They also won the Jail Administrator of the Year, Mrs. Sandra Prow, as a jail administrator. And Deputy Colonel Colway over here won the School Resource Officer of the Year. So this is a continuation of successes the sheriff's office has had. Resolution honoring the Sumner County Sheriff's Office for earning the Mothers Against Truck Driving Hero Award. Whereas the sheriff's office has made saving lives in roadways in Sumner County a priority, and whereas in December twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, Mothers Against Truck Driving had their annual banquet honored and recognized, Sumner County Sheriff's Office Deputy John Stitt and Sergeant Sergeant Aaron Pickard by awarding him the prestigious Hero Award for the fourth consecutive year. And whereas Mothers Against Truck Driving bestowed this honor upon Deputy Stitt and Sergeant Pickard for their efforts in the detection and apprehension of impaired drivers, educating other law enforcement agencies statewide, and impaired driving enforcement, and carrying the fatal vision program for high schools and citizen groups. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular sessions twenty-third day of February of two thousand and fifteen, that this body does hereby honor the Sumner County Sheriff's Office Deputy John Stitt and Sergeant Aaron Pickard for their many contributions to our county, and expresses its appreciation for the integrity and dedication they showed to our community. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, so as to make it a permanent part of the records of this body. And the clerk is hereby directed to furnish a copy of this resolution to the Sumner County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Stitt and Sergeant Pickard.
Congratulations. We have a motion. We have a motion. And then a motion in a second from Mr. Gut. All those in favor say aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Again, I would just like to say thank you, because we have dedicated officers that work every day to protect our citizens here in Sumner County, and I think we should be blessed. And when you see them, thank them for the job that they do, because they put everyone else above their self. Thank you.
Our next group to be honored tonight will be done by Commissioner Merrill Hine, and this is for the Hawkins Middle School Girls Basketball Championship Middle School Team. If you guys will come on down, if you ladies will come on down and join us here in the well. Y'all have on your gold jerseys. By the way, I want to congratulate Elise Webb Leach and Catherine Kepfer. They were former Lady Commandos at the Hinsville High School. We're proud of their service and work in Hawkins.
It is my distinct pleasure this evening to do this, because I have known Elise's father since he was in my scout troop in elementary school. And her mother, for many, many years, very well remember them bringing Elise as an elementary school child to my house trick-or-treat on Halloween. Wonderful family. As a matter of fact, Elise's grandfather is our retired General Sessions Judge Johnny Jones. We are very proud to have her here with us tonight, and this fine group of young ladies. This school sits in the eighth district that Mr. Decker and I represent, and is a wonderful, wonderful school. Whereas on Thursday, January twenty-second, Hawkins Middle School Girls Basketball Team captured the two thousand and fifteen Sumner County Championship with a thirty-seven to twenty-nine win over Knox Stoss at Driggs Creek. And whereas the Lady Commandos, led by Coach Elise Leach and Assistant Coach Catherine Kepfer, and Rick Simpson, is an excellent group of young players who exhibited team spirit and confidence. And whereas all-conference selections, I wish you would raise your hand, please, as I call your name, if you're here. Deshaun Hoosier, Janaya Mays, all tournament team selections, Cameron Giles, Delilah Davis, Caitlin Puck, and their teammates Ava Houston, Jessica Wilson, Lexie Link, McKenna Farnsey, Giselle Vincent, Savannah Lamb, Bryce Dossett, Ashley Baez, Kelsey Wilks, through their diligent efforts and outstanding performance, have demonstrated the benefits of hard work and dedication. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this day, this body does hereby congratulate and commend these outstanding players and their coaches for their accomplishments, and wish them success in the future. Be it resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is due a furnished copy of this resolution to the Hawkins Middle School Girls Basketball Team, and I so move this.
We have a motion, quick, Hines, in a second. Second from Mr. Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I want to remind everyone that as Chair of this commission, it is my responsibility to preserve order and decorum and to enforce the rules approved by this body. Members of the public may address the commission concerning any matters on the agenda as approved for the current meeting of the commission. No citizen shall speak in an inflammatory or offensive manner concerning any member of the commission, other elected officials, or any other citizens. I shall warn any citizen who violates rules and procedures of this commission to refrain from further inappropriate comments. We want to give anyone who wants to speak on an item on the agenda the opportunity to share concerns with the commission members and the community. We ask everyone to remain quiet and attentive to the comments being made, and there will be no outbursts from the audience. When it comes to your turn to speak, if someone has already addressed a specific concern or concerns you want to make, please let us know that you agree with the previous speaker or speakers, and address only your new concerns. You will be limited to five minutes, and with thirty seconds to go, or with thirty seconds remaining in your time, Mr. Kemp will keep the time, and he will remind the speaker when they have the thirty seconds remaining. If you have not signed up to speak and would like to speak, please come forward and add your name to the list requesting to speak. I will call out the name of the next person to speak, and add to that the name of the person who will speak after them, so they may be making their way to the speaker's podium. As you begin to speak, please give us your name and address for the record. Is there anyone else that would like to sign up to speak? Also, too, let me ask you to please put your cellphones on silence. Thank you. Okay, Sheriff? Anyone else who wants to sign up? Mr. Hines?
Mr. Chairman, I don't predict a court meeting, because of you who have been around for nights here at meetings very well know that. But I would like to ask that we... We had so many objections last night. I would sincerely request that we follow our procedure. If someone has an objection, the chair asks specifically what has been said that is objectionable, and then the chair will...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. First would be Don Scruggs, and next up would be Sean King. Mr. Scruggs?
Can you hear me?
And Sean King, are you here? Thank you.
May the place call. My name is Don Scruggs. I'm at one forty-one Bush's Lake in Gallatin, Tennessee. I want to talk tonight about the proposed land purchase. I was at the Budget Committee the other night, and I went with a different idea than I had tonight. I thought that the... And I'm going to make it clear, and I love the rule where you don't pick on people personally, and I don't believe we should do that. And I pick on no personality whatsoever. But I went with the idea. I seen the option that was signed, and I said it was for a hundred thousand dollars. I had the problem with one person in this, in any government, whether it be the county judge or anybody else. I have a problem with them being able to sign that much money away, and assign us into a big debt like that. I believe if you look in Book of Proverbs, it'll tell you that there's safety in a multitude of counsel. And I believe if there's any money to be spent, it needs to be through counsel. It needs to come through the court, and before it's appropriated, especially when it's a deal of a hundred thousand dollars, of our tax dollars. I had... That was the idea I had. I thought it may be a little usurpation going on there, maybe somebody overstepping, spending money that shouldn't be spent. And like I say, I'll pick on nobody. But I do have a concern, still have a concern, that we should have some kind of rule that nobody can spend that kind of money or promise that kind of money without going through the counsel of the entire court. As we were asking questions, and I think some of the commissioners were asking questions to the school superintendent, I started learning some things. I started learning some information. And then I got to thinking that this was not what I thought it was. The school superintendent told me he'd done a topographical survey, and that caught my attention, because I know what a topographical survey is. I've been working with them for many years. This is a topographical survey of that farm that I've had the thing twenty-five years. It's the Cotton Town Quadrangle. And I know what a topographical survey is, and I know what a survey is to find out where the people's moving, whether where the population's moving. I have demographic surveys, which call out... I think this young man was explaining the demographic survey. We call it a topographical survey. And then, which that's, you know, I ain't saying everybody's an expert on stuff like that. As I listened, I kept learning more and more, and I noticed that nobody really wanted to answer questions about this deal. When I got home, I started getting on the internet and talking to different people. And I've had some people call me, and they told me, they said, there's some stuff going on at the school board that we're not happy with. And they told me that one of the owners of the property was a school employee that worked with the superintendent. That upset me, and I ain't got a lot to tell you. It does upset me that nobody was told that there was inside money being changed with my tax dollars. I do have a serious problem with that. I think there's this conflict of interest. And I think if you look back on the history, and you look back on your history, and I know most of y'all were not here, there's hardly any of you. I think maybe Justice Harris may be the only one that was still here twenty-something years ago when I was talking about appointing a school superintendent. I don't know this young man. I don't have an idea who his character is. I don't have no bombs with him. Don't know who he is. I do have a problem with appointing superintendent. I told y'all we're twenty, this court, not y'all. Of course, I know some of y'all wouldn't even...
Scruggs, the twenty superintendent's not only again.
I know, but that's the point. I'm trying to make a point. I do understand that. But anyway, I told y'all what the superintendent would do, and I think he's done everything I told you would do when I told you what would happen if you didn't want one. And guys, I think we need to throw this deal away tonight. We need to send this whole deal to the grand jury and to the TBI and have it investigated. And I want to, y'all, to go back to the school board and tell them to cut their money off until they do something with the superintendent.
And I appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Sean King, followed by Laura Parker.
Sean King, followed by Laura Parker. Thanks, sir. Last week, a few days ahead of the bad weather, I purchased an extra loaf of bread and some other food items. Yeah, just like everybody else. As well as filled up my protein crate tank, spending around a hundred dollars. Most of us are well aware of the benefits of planning ahead, and are appreciative of the efforts of this body to plan for the county's future. One must understand that the workings of government are tremendously larger than our own individual households as well. So I was slow to criticize the proposed school land needed in the next four to five years, until I did a little research. The three-school beach complex is approximately seventy-eight acres. The three-school station camp complex is one hundred and twenty-three point four acres. The proposed land is two hundred plus acres, which I understand the larger amount of land is because of the... Much of the land is unusable. I was also surprised at how close to both beach and station camp the new land was, which I understand is because there are twelve hundred plus homes coming into the area. And finally, the price of two point three million and the hundred thousand option to buy seemed a little expensive, but the property in that area is indeed overpriced. So I tried to relate the logic of this purchase to my winter storm predicament. Ahead of the bad storm of four or five days, I go across the street and purchase twenty-four hundred dollars worth of food from the most expensive grocery store that nobody ever shops at. We do need to plan for next year. Well, we do well to plan for next year, much less five years from now. I couldn't use up twenty-four hundred dollars worth of food, and Sumner County doesn't need to sit on two hundred acres. I've yet to hear how this property was a good deal. In closing, if the commission is so convinced of the growth of the area, they can, in the future, for the public good, condemn enough property for schools when needed through eminent domain at fair market value. Thank you.
Laura Parker, followed by Kevin Palmer. Open any...
Baker.
Thank you.
And Chief Martin.
You're here for us.
Here, taking a call from time out. Four-two-four AV Wade Road, Portland. My name is Laura Baker. I'm with the Sumner Tech Payer Alliance. You have in front of you a letter regarding Resolution fifteen oh two oh four appropriating three million four hundred fifty thousand dollars for land purchase for new schools. Those commissioners not in attendance on February ninth, the Budget Committee unanimously approved without a single question one member of the committee that money for two parcels of land totaling two hundred and sixty-five acres for a school campus not needed for four or five years. There were questions asked by citizens and commissioners not on the Budget Committee. During the meeting, the county executive testified that he conducted evaluations of other properties, obtained independent appraisals to determine the fair market value of the properties, negotiated a reduction in price to get down to thirteen thousand dollars per acre, and used topographical maps to identify suitable properties. On February tenth, we emailed an open records request to the county executive requesting the documentation to substantiate his testimony. The request was for any and all documentation, including but not limited to evaluation of other properties, landowners, property appraisals, topographical maps, et cetera, between January one, two thousand and twelve, and February nine, two thousand and fifteen. County executive responded promptly with the copies of the two contracts that were attached to the Budget Committee agenda, plus the two fifty thousand dollar checks. Upon requesting clarification that there were no other documents that would be provided, the county executive replied, "I have no other additional documentation." There are numerous questions associated with this land purchase. One, overpriced. Going back to January one, two thousand and thirteen, the highest price per acre for parcels over one hundred acres was four thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars per acre versus the thirteen thousand dollars per acre the county executive has committed to pay. This is a waste of taxpayers' money and at least two point two million dollars, not refundable earnest money. The hundred thousand dollar payment has already been made. Why was the earnest money this high for an eight-month exclusivity? For this amount of money, the expiration date should be far beyond June thirtieth, or the amount should have been much lower. This is excessive, as already mentioned. The station camp school complex is on one hundred and twenty-three acres. Why do we need two hundred and sixty-five acres? One of the explanations is it would be nice to have two entrances. Well, if you're driven down those two roads, you can't pass two school buses by there. So there we go with another excessive, spending millions of dollars to flatten this land and widen the roads. An encumbrance. The same premium price of thirteen thousand dollars an acre is paid for also on the piece of land where there's a life estate, making the larger parcel, one hundred and fifty acres, unusable for an indefinite amount of time. Lack of due diligence. Without a fair market value appraisal, how could anyone be assured that a fair price was paid? The citizens, the Budget Committee, or any of you? Additional costs. Since the land and roads are not suitable for their intended use in their current state, there will be millions of dollars in additional costs. Financial risk. What if the growth doesn't happen, or it doesn't happen there? Potential liability. Somebody's living right in the middle of county-owned property. If they get hurt, who is that on? And the contract completely missed having a whole harmless clause. That's huge. Potential conflict of interest. Is there anybody who might be concerned just about the looks of this? Historical perspective. This land deal was negotiated by the same person who negotiated a twenty thousand dollar money for Mega Site Industrial Park. You voted against that as an ill-advised deal, and wonder if you'll do the same here. And the timing. If the land is not needed for four to five years, and the expiration on this, the option is not until June thirtieth, why do we have to rush and do this tonight, since we don't have all the information? In light of the many issues listed above, we have written a formal letter of complaint and request for investigation to the Comptolers Office, who is responsible for investigating claims of waste, fraud, and abuse. We've also copied our state senator and three representatives, and three of those individuals have contacted the Comptolers Office and expressed concern on our behalf. As our elected representatives on this commission or any of the committees, this is the kind of scrutiny the citizens of this county expect from you when making decisions about spending our money. This is especially true when such expenses are being decided in the wake of an unprecedented and highly contested tax increase. And I agree, planning is a great idea, but this is not the right land at the right time at the right price. When a situation is forced to fit such as this one, the only conclusion that can be drawn is that someone has something to gain personally. The question is who and what? Under these collective circumstances, we would be well advised to vote no on this resolution and walk away from the hundred thousand dollars, not because we said so, but because it's the only vote you can take in good conscience. Thank you.
Kevin Baker, followed by Donna DiSoppo.
Kevin Baker, four-two-four AV Wade Road, Portland. I'm speaking in regards to the seventy million dollar bond issue. For those commissioners not in attendance on February ninth, the Budget Committee unanimously approved without questioning any member of the committee on the seventy million dollars. Even a rudimentary review of the Sumner County school building program would reveal overwhelming disparities in project costs and priorities. For example, the entire ninety-three thousand square foot, forty-two classroom Burris Elementary School has a cost of fifteen million dollars, whereas the Beach High School, two thousand square foot, principal's office, pedestrian bridge, and overall sprucing up, has a cost of twelve point eight million dollars. Another example of this issue is the windows and door replacements for Madison Creek Elementary, WB Williams Elementary, Schaefer Middle, White House Middle, Benny Bills Elementary, Westmoreland High, Westmoreland Middle Schools. Each have a cost of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for replacing the doors and windows. Are we to believe that each one of those schools has the exact same cost? This year, the general fund for the schools increased by over eleven million dollars. It was increased by over eleven million dollars. Just got a little bit of a head cold. Over the past several years, five million dollars annually has been allocated to capital projects, mainly for schools. The sales tax revenues, which historically and regularly goes over the budget each year, also goes to the schools. As the director of schools has said himself, you can tell any organization's priorities by how they spend their money. The timing and the level of expense, as written in the school's program, clearly demonstrate that the priorities are not aimed at rapid elimination of portables or eliminating, improving classroom conditions. Many of the documented projects are ones. The needs, things like projects, and they include HV... The needs, things like projects, and they include HVAC system, replacing the roof, window replacement, they're being pushed off for years. Practically speaking, this approach with traditional cost overruns, as we know, happen in projects, will leave HVAC systems, roof repairs, and window and door replacements underfunded. It is understandable for the school director to ask for all the wants at one time. Right? The commission should work with the school director and the board, but not succumb to every one. It is your fiduciary responsibility to ensure that taxpayer dollars are spent the most efficiently and effectively ways possible. We have been told that professional service cannot be put out to bid. While that technically may be true, providers of professional services can be interviewed and multiple appropriately qualified providers can be asked to provide budgetary proposals. Such a process must be followed to ensure that pencils are sharpened and vendors captanas the supplies of cost of architectural and engineering fees as well as the projects themselves. To the commission, tonight is a defining moment in your lives. Each of you has a symbolic pack of cigarettes, or a line of cocaine, or a bag of meth or heroin in front of you. The addictive symbolism that I refer to is the bond issue that you're going to vote on. If you vote for the seventy-million-dollar bond issue, you commit Sumner County to twenty-two more years of debt addiction. That includes thirty-two million dollars' worth of interest. The previous commission had a plan to actually... It's actually a resolution, to get the county out of debt in the next ten years. I am against the tax increase, but now that we have it, let's put it to better use than taking on additional debt for more than two decades. If we took thirty-five cents off the tax increase, which is about fourteen million dollars per year, and either apply it to the current debt reduction or re-prioritize the current school project list and do them over the next five years incrementally, we could then fund additional capital projects with money from existing revenue streams, okay? And take a little bit out of the eleven-billion-dollar excess to the school budget. This would accelerate the reduction in the current debt. Once we are debt-free, annually, thirty-four million dollars becomes available to fill our needs and wants. Sumner County has an opportunity to truly be exceptional here by being debt-free. Name me another county in Tennessee that could say that they were debt-free. Strong schools is only a part portion of a kid's strong future. If you approve taking on this new debt, children that are born today will go through the Sumner School System, graduate, they'll get a job, they'll buy their first home, and they'll still be paying the debt that you incurred today.
Thank you. Donna DiSopo, followed by Jane Kazner.
Good evening, my name is Donna DiSopo, I live at 101 Shandless Court. I'd like to thank the individuals that are coming here this evening to speak to all of you because they do a lot of research, they look at the public records, and they can inform you of what is factual and true. So I thank you all this evening for coming and others who are participating and in this room this evening and being engaged and listening and knowing what's happening in your county because this is very important to you. When you find that your taxes consistently increase, you will understand why, and tonight is a reachable moment. Excuse me. I'd like to have your attention.
Ma'am, please address the issue.
I am addressing the issue, but I'd like to have the attention of an elected official. As I look at these priorities of where our money's going, it is very discouraging because I see freshening up administrative suites. How is that improving our children's education? How? I'd like to hear a debate on that because there's nothing to debate. The priorities are way out of whack here. I myself personally could bring a couple of skill sets because I manage a stable of rental properties. And my responsibility is to provide heat. And when I see Phase Three HVACs, doors and windows, you know, you can be energy efficient when you replace those windows and you'll reduce the cost, but it's kicked out to Phase Three. How can that be? Roofs. If you don't take care of your structures, because your biggest expenditures are your structures and your people, if you don't take care of your structures, it will cost you far greater over time. I'm struggling with the priorities of the spending, but I have some assumptions as to why they're in the queue that they're in. Because what happens is you can willfully spend other people's money very freely when it's not your own. When I manage my properties, I tightly manage them and I have in a queue the priorities, the must-dos. The aesthetics is just trappings. When the average Joe goes to work, they're in cubicles. All you need is an office with a desk, doesn't have to be fancy, and to have the tools to do the work. Doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal. It's the tools to do the work of the people, the tools to do the work of the children. And when I see an article, "Cold schools makes parents hot," you betcha. There should be no cold schools because if you had the priorities in order, you would take care of the HVACs, you'd take care of the roofs, you'd take care of the necessities first. So, in my opinion, if you're putting all these aesthetics first, what you're actually doing is you're spending other people's money unwisely. And I do not consent. I don't consent to that. And we are the consent of the governor, and the governor is clearly telling you, "No, we have problems here. Where is this money going? Why are we taking these priorities on the wants? Because what will happen is you're going to run out of money. I can predict it. And then you're going to say, "Well, we've got to do the HVAC, but we can't wait out here." But we've got a wants done. And they don't benefit the many, they benefit the few at the expense of the many because the average Joe wants to do their house. They want to make it look nice, they want to renovate their bathrooms. I'd like to do that to my house, but I don't because it's not a priority. If I need a roof first, I'm doing that, and I'm going to kick that later because it's just a want. It's aesthetics, it's not necessity. What I'm asking this board is to do your fiduciary responsibilities and to tightly manage these dollars because we are instructing you to do this. That's why we're all here tonight, we're instructing you. We see problems here. And as you vote, what will happen is you put yourself on record. That's what I like about votes. And that gives us a lot of intelligence to do what's necessary in the years to come. I kindly ask that you revisit these things. You listen to the people that have spoken this evening, and you abide by the will of the people and take care of the needs of who was supposed to be for this tax increase, the children. Thank you very much.
Jane Kazner, followed by Harriet Babbitt.
I'm Jane Kazner, 1006 Carriage Hill Drive, Hendersonville. I just want to say I strongly agree with the previous speakers. This is too much money for our children, our grandchildren. They made their good points, I have a call. I agree.
Thank you. Harriet Babbitt, followed by John Moore.
Harriet Babbitt, 102 Eliza Street. I actually live down Long Pollo in the Beach community. I went to Beach when it was a four-year grammar school. I understand the necessity, things have changed since I went to school, but I really think you're going overboard with your expenditures on Beach School. I also don't approve of taking on a far a lot of money if you don't... if you can prioritize and not have to borrow and pay all the interest. My husband and I don't make a lot of money, and our priorities, we have to pay our bills first. And then our luxuries are very few and far between. And I think that the tax rate is overboard, and I think that you've got this money and you think it's your spend, but it's actually our money that you're spending. And I think you really should take into consideration a little more of the public's feelings because I think you're just ignoring us and we feel like... Thank you.
John Moore, followed by Kenny Jackson.
I'm John Moore, the 1069 Morning New Cry here at Gallatin. I'm a lifelong resident of the area. Actually, as a small child, I lived in Davidson County, but I've lived in and around Hendersonville since I started at the seventh grade there in nineteen sixty-four. I just want to bring to the attention of the council what the perception in the public is. You may know this, I really don't think all of you do. If you do, you've been told you don't believe it. I worked in the community, and I'm old and I talk to a lot of people and know a lot of people. I'll share with you. Disagree with some of you, but I still like you, I don't think anybody here that I don't like. But the public perception is that you're rushing into something that we've got to live with forever. Now, I know you don't think you're rushing, but to you, it's time, but to the public, it's like a few months or even a year or two before you spend, you know, seventy million dollars. They perceive that as rushing into action. And a lot of the people I talk to are teachers, they're friends of mine, some I've known all my life. And they are the, really, the harshest critics of the building programs. Not against building schools. I don't think there's anybody here that's anti-school. I know some of us are perceived that way, we're not. We believe in good education. But I don't know how many times teachers have said to me, "You wouldn't believe how much money they spent to do this." And then they turn around and they have to redo it for it. They could have added a hundred thousand dollars when they built the school, but now they're having to spend a million to do what they could have done then, just a very few years ago. And the public also perceives that the council doesn't know a whole lot about construction. Maybe not about Little State. And whether that's true or not, that is the public perception. What I would like to urge you is to do what we all need to do. Back up and say, "There are things I don't know. I need help understanding some of the things." You know, there are a lot of you that are experts in certain fields, but that, you know, doesn't make you an expert in everything. And there's somebody better than you in your field. I've been running back those for almost forty-eight years. I guarantee you there's somebody better than I am, and I'm good. But what I would urge you to do is seek out the help of people in the community, and there are a lot of them who would donate their time, who know more about construction than you do, who know more about Little State than you do. And these people would be glad to talk to you as an ad hoc committee, whatever you want to do. Tap your resources and think because whether you believe it or not, and I know some of you think I'm stupid up here, but that's okay. The public perception is you're rushing into things that cannot be undone, that are going to be harmful to our community. I just want you to think about it.
Kenny Jackson. Kenny Jackson, followed by Harry Valentino. Is Kenny Jackson here? Harry Valentino, followed by Luke Tinsley.
Thank you. My name is Harry Valentino, and I live at 1124 Landman Court, Gallatin. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to say something. I have been a... had the good pleasure and the honor of being a resident of Gallatin for about three years now and have come to care deeply for the community and the people in it. Having said that, I would admit I'm not an expert at this point on administrative law in the county, nor would I profess to be an expert on how administrative issues are handled in this county. I, like many other people, were somewhat surprised and concerned about the magnitude of the Little State tax increase, not necessarily in a personal sense, but more in a sense for the security and well-being of the county in a longer-term direction. Having said that, from the limited information that I have received so far, when I look at the magnitude of the debt that the county is anticipating undertaking, most of it being for capital expenditures, I would have somehow an answer questions which I think are worthy of consideration. In my lifetime, I've learned that probably a strong balance sheet is not only appropriate in business, it is likewise extremely appropriate for city, county, and for that matter, federal government issues. As I look at the... I interpreted the level of expenditure of seventy million dollars that we're talking about making for capital, I see no prioritization in the data and information I've received on the priorities of others, of the projects that would be undertaken. Obviously, there are some very high-priority projects that are needed, whether they need replacement capitals or whether they need repair the avenues. However, I would like to see some prioritization, assuming that money is not available to undertake all of them and which are the highest priorities to undertake to achieve the goals of quality education for our children. I am also aware that teachers educate children, and parents educate children. Buildings do not educate children. They're nice to have. I would also caution that once capital expenditures, unlike operating expenditures, once they're made, they cannot be taken back. If I look at seventy million dollars and the interest on seventy million dollars, I think that equates probably on the capital side, twenty-five-hundred dollars per student roughly for every student in the school system. The interest would probably be another twenty-five-hundred dollars. On top of that, I have no idea what the existing capital investment for the school system is. I would be concerned about the balance between operating capitals, which are essential with ongoing viability in the school system, and the magnitude of capital per student that children invest in. Make no mistake, that high capital cost will detract in the long run from the availability of operating revenue to support your operating expenses. High capital expenditures will also dip into higher operating expenditures. You should make no mistake about that. So I have not seen projections as yet on how much additional operating expenses those capital expenditures would undertake. I would also be interested in looking at the operating costs per student for the Sumner County schools as well, and if possible, the non-operating cost per student measured for both on interest and capital expenditures. I wish the commission well and to have the decisions that they need to make. Obviously, I think salon schools and educated children are in the future of the county. I hate to see the county, and I've lived in these areas before.
Thanks, Senator, that's in time.
And I hate to see that happen here. Thank you very much.
Luke Tinsley, followed by Chris Dunleavy.
My name is Luke Tinsley. I live at 142 River Chase, Hendersonville City District Six. I'm not going to sit up here and ramble forever because there's been a lot of people saying in front of me that have said it a lot better than I'll ever do, but I think it's funny that we can go and spend twice as much of property for what it's worth. My grandparents have sold real estate for almost four decades, and when I told them about this on my way over here, they said that it was foolish. They said it was foolish to spend money on a piece of property twice what it's worth for something that you can't use all the property. It's unusable. Like they said, a hundred and fifty acres is unusable. Would you go and buy a gallon of milk and half of it be unusable? Pay twice as much for a gallon of milk and half of it be unusable? It's just ridiculous. You're all being really, really foolish. You should look into this, investigate this. We've investigated it. What have you been doing? We elected all of you. It seems really disrespectful that we're giving you the money to spend, and you're spending it willy-nilly, overpaying for this, spending money on a new executive suite for some principal. A principal doesn't teach a student. A teacher teaches a student. Give them textbooks. Give them materials that they need.
Okay, we have a question.
Part of our rules of decorum are not singing the honest person or making disrespectful comments to the body of commissioners. I think we cross that line several times.
Okay. Mr. Tinsley, state to the, to what's on the agenda.
I, thank you. I just, I feel like if we're gonna, if we're gonna spend money on a new school, that's acceptable, but to overpay for a piece of property that you can't use all the property, to spend it on stuff that you don't need, it's wasteful. It's just foolish. I don't, I guess I'm done, because I don't know anything else to say. It's that simple.
Thanks, sir. Wes Dunkel, followed by Stephen Puckett.
I'm Wes Dunkel. I live at 321 Buffalo Run in Hendersonville. I had some comments, but I wanted to address a concern that a citizen had, that I understand the concern about this piece of property potentially having a conflict of interest. Then I, this is just me speaking off the top of my head, which is what I thought right over there, but when you, when, this is a small county. When you get to how many people are large landowner, large landowners, and with, what, five thousand employees that the school system has, I can't recall what, but it's in the thousands. And when you have thousands of school employees, and you have the very few number of large landholders, chances are, somebody's gonna be one or two degrees of separation away from having, from having a conflict. So, I mean, to say that it's a big scandal that the landowner knows or is a school employee, well, five thousand school employees in the county, I mean, that's, chances are pretty good. So that's one thing I wanted to address. And I, I understand the skepticism, but I mean, using my imagination, I mean, I can see how it's, it's possible. So I'm speaking tonight in strong support for the funding proposals that are, that are up for vote tonight. And some say these proposals are for wants and not needs. Well, I beg to differ. Portables are outdated, and, and the inadequate heating and air conditioning systems are the top issues for parents of Sumter County. This plan, which the gentleman before probably didn't know about, but I mean, this plan details the priorities. It's big, and it's expansive, and it took a lot of work to put this together and make these priorities. So, I mean, it's all here. You may not agree with the priorities, but I mean, I can guarantee you that there are those who are pretty informed on the subject that I trust that have made those priorities because the citizens of the county, the parents have been, have been involved in it. So they have concerns. This is the agenda for tonight's meeting. I don't know how many of you have read it. It's pretty big, two-hundred-and-ninety-two pages, or a hundred-and-ninety-two pages. But I went through it, and this also represents a lot of work, and so I appreciate the commission putting this together, the committees, putting the work behind this. I mean, this is not easy stuff to do. These documents, these two plans, represent something that we haven't done for a decade: plan. You may not agree with the plans, but it's a plan, something we haven't done. And I would say it's easier to plan, or it's better to plan than to not have one at all. Some are moaning about the cost, and I understand that. There's a lot of scary zeros in those numbers, but it reminds me of an old engineering motto: it can be cheap, it can be fast, or it can be good. Pick two. Our county is growing. The children are coming. We can either stuff them in more portables, or they can learn in classrooms. Last month, an angry citizen referred to our schoolchildren as spoiled brats. Well, after watching grown adults behave like that, such behavior for our children shouldn't be a surprise. Why are we acting so selfish? What example are we setting for our children? I propose we would stop raving so much about our wallets and reelection prospects, and instead focus on the kind of county we want to leave for our children. After all, what are we arguing about? What has brought up the worst behavior in all of us? Money. I believe we were put on this earth to do great things. Is this really the best we can do?
Stephen Puckett.
I reside at 228 Saunders Ferry Road, apartment A21, Nashville, Tennessee. I have a lot of things to say on the bond issue and the land purchase. Quite a few of them were said by previous speakers. I've looked into the land issue as best I can, using what little knowledge, what knowledge I have of real estate, and what the irony is, is that it's unique. This is a unique deal in that the life estate is placed on the seller instead of the buyer. Typically, it's placed on the buyer. That's why we have to have a no harm clause. That surprised me. I thought that was a very unique item that's very rare, that a seller will provide to the buyer. And that, that can make this, make or break this deal, I think. That's probably why the extra cost was put there. But when it comes to the bond issue and the priorities of our county, one of the things that a lot of people may not realize is that through these steps, you actually had somebody who's actually passed their family land to taxation watching. That's me. I lost, I lost my family land the year before I was born, so I never got to crawl on it. I never got to be carried on it. I never got to do anything. And so when I see taxes go up, and when I see tax money being spent, I scrutinize it because all I have to, if I want a good reason to, all I have to do is drive just a little bit north in Oxford. And I can drive by that land, and it'll remind me every day, and it reminds me every time I do why it's important that, to make sure that the tax dollars are spent wisely, tax increases are justified. I personally used my role as the Democratic nominee for state representative to tour Beach, the Beach High School elements, and all the schools that were opposed, with Dr. Phillips and the members of this commission, who thought it was actually important to actually go see what actually needed to be done, that considered it worth their time and travel and gas. At, you know, at Beach High School, a lot of people criticize the so-called suite that they have, administrative suite. What the detail gets left out is the reason why it's even being built is because they're not building a new suite, they're moving the office so that you have a secure entrance, so that you don't have, so that they can actually lock and secure those doors and make it so that you have to walk through the office, so that everybody has to walk through the office to get to access that school. Not only that, but they criticized that sidewalk that I spoke, that everybody calls a frill. Thing is, the reason why it's being built is because you have four administrators that have, four administrators and teachers, whatever they have available that day, that have to stand outside, no matter what the weather is, and watch children, play security guard for, during the lunch hour, as kids walk back and forth four times in open air, no matter what the weather is, just so they can go to lunch, because in order to save money, they had to shut down the cafeteria at the annex. And so that burns up time, and that takes people away. So guess what? Every bully in Beach High School knows what time, if they weren't bullying somebody, that there's gonna be four people missing tied up for something that, quite honestly, that is not within their jail description. And so that, not only that, but in the future, if one housing system goes down, the other housing system, if it's enclosed, if that sidewalk's enclosed, can support the other, okay? Which makes it strength, strengthens it, makes it so that you don't have to, it doesn't make one housing system in one building be, become an absolute emergency, because now you have a backup. A lot of people are talking about windows and doors as if they are, you know, a way, as if it's a waste. The thing is, windows and doors not leaking is just as important as having a housing system. Because you can have a brand-new housing system, that's the best in the world, but if every window and door leaks like it's going out of style, guess what? You're still gonna have cold buildings. That's common sense. And that's the thing is, yes, we're gonna be taking on debt for this. It's like, but that's the thing is, that's how you do this.
Okay. Thanks, sir. That's the end of public comments. Now we'll go to a report of the chair. The school board has invited the commission to meet with them for lunch at Gilde Elementary School on March the sixth at eleven-thirty for a lunch and a tour of the building. That's at Gilde Elementary on March the sixth, and we'll get an email out to you. Mr. Holt has an announcement that he would like to make about the challenges that we have had from all the program participation in the last few days. Mr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make it brief. I want to let everyone know during, you know, our latest hazardous weather event last week, we've got a lot of challenges. But I want to thank, personally thank Judy Harding, Highway Department. She's done an outstanding job. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department and all their personnel, and EMA, Ken Wagner, Keith Douglas with the EMS, ambulance service. Our first responders have gone above and beyond to make the public safe and to work really hard during these harsh conditions. And I just want to let all of you know what kind of great job they've done. So if you see county employees, please thank them. They've made a huge difference in the safety of our public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. We do appreciate all the people who have worked so hard over these last few days in trying to keep Sumter County safe. Commissioners, as we discussed items this evening, let me remind you that all comments are to be directed to the chairman, and that we should not mention other commissioners' names or districts. If you have an individual or personal issue with another commissioner, please address that with that commissioner outside of this meeting. They'll need to maintain the proper record and respect that we all should have for each other. We may disagree and debate, but let us not get personal. Now, the veteran's service report, that is on your desk. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you have something?
Yes, when you started, Mr. Rain, did you ask us to put our phones on silent?
Yes, sir.
Somebody didn't get the memo.
Okay. Okay, please put your phone on silent. Thanks. All right. Veteran's service report, that is on your desk, and we do not, we do not need to act on that, that's just for your information. Report of the county officials, the written reports to be filed by the county officials, that is on your desk, and that is for your information also. And we need to approve the consent agenda that was added to your, that was added to your, to the agenda this evening. So that is the, that should be the third page on your, your agenda. We have a motion from Mr. Chris Taylor, that we approve this. We have a second from where? Mr. Higgins? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have approved the consent agenda. We have approved the written reports, notaries, public, the notaries, and we will need to vote on that. That is also on your desk. So at this time, we'll let Mr. Kemp take care of that. We have a motion and a second from Mr. Rain. And now, Mr. Kemp will have that on board. Notary applications are on board. Mr. Christopher, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Mr. Chairman? Okay, thanks, sir. Now we are ready for our, we are ready for our committee reports. The report, the first committee is the committee on committee. Mr. Goode, as chairman, would you like to make that report?
Mr. Chairman, the meeting ended at nine in the regular scheduled meeting, six-thirty. There was one item on the agenda, Mrs. Sonia Moore, Marsh Ratten was, used to be on that at the recommendation of the county executive, we replaced him with John Westwood Jones, that was a shenanigans committee on the subject.
Okay, we have a motion, there are a second, a second from Mr. Lamar. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any folks like that? That's it, Mr. Chairman. Legislative committee, Mr. Lamar?
No one.
Highway commission, Mr. Graves?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a court. I'd like to add to Mr. Holt's and thank him for thanking everybody in the emergency situation. A lot of volunteers in this county too, also, that I'd like to thank. It's a lot of people that's had some struggles with their homes also, and I'd like to say that I'd say a little prayer for them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. General Ops Committee, General Operations, Mr. Rain?
No one.
Public Service Committee, Bill Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, I will report.
Emergency Services Committee, Mr. Guthrie?
No one.
Thanks, sir. Legislative Committee, Mr. Harris?
One item, Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh two dash one, asking federal government to support a voluntary emergency, emergency responders' tax deduction. I saw that.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second by Mr. Guthrie. Discussion. No questions? Okay, that is, that's on the board. Resolutions on the board. This question, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Resolutions approved. You have a vote. Okay, thanks, sir. Rules and Procedures Committee, I am the chairman of that committee. Let me remind you that we will be meeting next Monday evening at six-thirty, and again, solicit your input on any changes that you see that we might need to make in this body. If you have any of those changes, you can share those with me, or with Ms. Lee, with Dennis, or with Mr. Kemp. You will do that, and we will be meeting next Monday evening at six-thirty. Financial Management Committee, Mr. Langer.
Mr. Chairman, we pass the resolutions, fifteen oh two oh eight, fifteen oh two oh nine, but we will hand that up to the budget committee for discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Budget Committee, Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Further change on the agenda, the number one item on the item is fifteen oh two oh eight, that is the twenty-fifteen reservation on the nine million dollars. These are separate, as everyone knows by law, how they have to be separated and be voted on separately. I would reserve right, Mr. Chairman, to make a couple remarks that are related to some mistakes that may be made. And also, we have Mr. Jim Harrison- And also, we have Mr. Jim Harrison here with Civil Site and Director of Schools that may want to also suspend the rules and allow some clarification. I make a motion on fifteen oh two oh eight.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Goode and have a second for Mr. Poppy. Okay, Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the same category, you all begin separating because the rules were bonds, fifteen oh two dash oh nine, the resolution was seventy to, seventy-eight on the contract and official pay, that's some of the.
Okay, well, we've got to discuss number seven first. We've got to discuss fifteen oh two oh eight, I think, before we go fifteen oh two oh nine. I think that's what we would even do. What you were trying to do was to combine them, right? Is that what you asked me to do?
I'm saying, it's, I mean, we have to have them separated, the rules were bonds, but it's, it's one sign that we can set, we can talk about them separately.
You could ask that they be considered together.
Group and approve. Okay, so you're making a motion to group and approve?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's a second by Mr. Green. Okay, now we are discussing fifteen oh two dash oh eight, fifteen oh two dash oh nine.
No, sir, we didn't vote for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. You're right, you're, you're telling, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second. Now we need to vote on that, and we will ask Mr. Kemp to put that on the board. The motion on, that we're going to be voting on since the board's opened up, is to group resolutions fifteen oh two oh eight and resolutions fifteen oh two oh nine. We're not voting on the resolutions themselves, we're voting on the procedure to group. We will then vote on the resolutions after the vote, if it is approved. The motion to group is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Fifteen votes is approved. The motion to group, the resolutions is approved.
Mr. Kemp?
We didn't approve, we didn't vote on the resolution. We didn't, we didn't vote on the resolution.
Just a motion approved and approved on, as we discuss. Okay, based on the vote, then we will approve and approve.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments from the standpoint of chair. And then I think what we would do, if there's no objection, could suspend the rules to allow the Director of Schools and the professionals speak to this. I've got to do a couple of clarifications. It's been alluded to that some of what we have talked about is new information that has been rushed through. Everyone here knows that it was first presented seven months ago, in August is when the Director of Schools first started presenting this identical plan. And I can't remember how many meetings we've had collectively, but those that sought information had county meetings, including adult meetings, to go to. So that's about six or seven months of due diligence from this identical plan. The amount of, has been discussed on the bond of the school, I mean, I think the last two bonds technically did, in reference of around a hundred million last one bond, and then another one that was around ninety-five million. I was sublet here, and we prefer a lot of this information about that it's been stated that some of this land is unusable. Certainly, some land's unusable, but that's never actually been stated by anyone at the place the school system comes. And they'll explain that in a minute. Mr. Chairman, a couple of other points to point out. We've talked about the cost per acre. I would remind this body and those that are here that we paid thirty thousand an acre when we did Drake's Creek. We paid fourteen thousand an acre, eight to ten years ago, when we did Gateview in Portland, and we did another ten thousand an acre when we did Portland West and Better. Another thing to point out, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to see the Director of Schools speak, because I've, I've been very excited to hear a lot of people talk about spending, we spend too much. I've been a part of the previous commissions, so I'm somewhat guilty in some of these. But the current commission, every comment that's been made as it relates to expenditures in the past has been from the previous commission thus far. Just a couple of reminders here for the body, because a lot of speakers obviously are unaware of this, and it seems like we continue to get misled as it relates to facts. This county refinanced its debt, as everyone here knows, in 2011 of approximately a hundred and twelve million dollars. This created a capacity bond, the last issue took thirty million dollars, which is where we got the boroughs and so forth. Twenty fourteen, two thousand and four to twenty fourteen, the county consumed over fifteen million dollars out of our hospital fund. Those years long for capital and non-capitalized. In two thousand and fifteen, five million, four nine three seven, of one-time reserve funds, but passed from the previous commission for debt services for capital projects of current capital needs, completion, for example, like boroughs and one, in small, one small type items. The current, county currently has zero capacity. We had put ourselves in so much debt prior to what had happened that we had zero bond capacity to do anything. And the county, as we speak, prior to what this commission has done, has had ninety-five million in identified capital needs with no sources to pay for them. And as our, as our finance director pointed out, we, we're in a situation where we're not even going to make payroll come July. Mr. Chairman?
Are we?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to.
One more, one more.
My point of order is, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about bond issuance and future expenditures. Here we are, rehashing history over here, rehashing the tax requests.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, because we've been preaching to you guys.
How long, how long?
We need to stick to the, just like everybody else would ask, to stick, stick to what we're here to vote on tonight, is a bond which.
Okay, thank you, sir. But this is part of the bond issue that he's trying to clarify.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're giving out this information, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about things that happened in the past. We went into a lot of, a lot of, let me just hear your comment.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a lot of rhetoric up here about.
Okay, you'll have a chance for a boil-in convention.
This time we're voting, Mr. Chairman, he keeps on deviating the previous commission.
Okay, and I was on that previous commission.
And I am too.
Okay.
And I take exception to the fact.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, that's.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, you each have an order when it comes to the previous.
Mr. Chairman, almost every.
Finish up, please.
I would, sir. Almost every speaker but one alluded to the fact of us expenditures and so forth, and what my colleague who spoke could have pointed out is that most of those quotes were in fact and in dispute. Be that as you may, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and I appreciate my colleague here and his excitement from the other side. I would like to, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules for the Director of Schools to speak. Mr. Kemp, second. Second from Mr. Lamar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes like sign? Okay, Dr. Phillips? Okay, Dr. Phillips? Come on up.
Good evening. First, and Jim Harrison, many of you know Jim, he's an engineer with many, many, many school projects, not only here but in Middle Tennessee. And Jim's probably going to do more of the speaking tonight. I think he left some things on the desk, maps and a couple of things. So I think he'll be the one to address most of the things that you may have a question to turn about. We haven't talked about this particular site in quite so long. And I understand that people have concerns. I can tell you that first, if I can take the liberty to say this, I'm, I'm used to getting beat up, I understand that, that's part of the job description. I, I do feel bad for the school employee. She was ran by one of the speakers, and, you know, I've never had a conversation with that lady about school property or maintenance or anything else. That's not part of her job description, and certainly would be no reason for me to do that, but I feel, feel bad for her. She, I think, is a long, longtime member of Sumner County and her family, very well-known. They inherited property that they wanted to sell, and I just feel bad for her that that people would do that. But just wanted to say that. A couple of things that struck me, and I think Commissioner Goode mentioned this earlier, I just did really a quick analysis today, because people talk about location and talk about price, and we've heard that tonight. Number one, there's no perfect school site. You won't find one if you look for the next hundred and fifty years. It's not one. No disrespect, but there's never been one. Every piece of property the county has purchased for a school site since they've had schools have had improvements made to them after you've purchased the property. And you can all go back and find the public records of exactly how that money was spent in different sites, costs different amounts. The first threshold is to figure out if the location's correct, because if the location's in the correct, incorrect place, it really don't matter what you pay per acre. It's not serving its intended purpose. We had a very narrow scope of where we were looking for property because we believe, based on the data, that housing development, number of homes that were rooftops that were built in that area, within a very dense radius, will cause the county to need to have a school complex in that general area. So it's pretty, pretty narrow scope of what we were trying to look for. So location obviously is very, very important, and I think that's something that Jim will speak to and the maps kind of show. Another thing that's interesting that I think Mr. Goode mentioned that didn't take long, many of you were here for these votes, because I had the minutes here from them. Drake's Creek was mentioned, the Drake's Creek campus, which is where we're building Borough Elementary on now, that was purchased back in oh seven, August twenty-first of oh seven, it passed this commission with unanimous vote, many of you voted for it. It was thirty thousand dollars an acre. The one thing that's interesting about that is we followed that through, there was quite a bit of talk about it after the purchase, because the land development cost of that piece of property was pretty high. I think there was quite an expenditure for this sewer, if I'm not mistaken, plus the roadway into the school, if you've ever been out there, it's pretty long, and that was quite costly to do that at that time. So if you break it all down, you probably had somewhere around ninety thousand dollars an acre in that piece of property. And this commission voted Resolution zero seven dash two zero zero nine unanimously to do that. The next one was Portland Gateview, and Gateview was bought on June twenty of two thousand and six. And the Gateview was roughly four thou, fourteen thousand dollars an acre. It was off the road there, and I think quite a bit was spent on some road improvement, just to be able to get to the site. Portland West was bought there across from the high school, paid ten thousand dollars an acre to it back in oh six. In fact, it was bought on the same exact day. All of those passed unanimously, and they're part of the record. So I guess when you talk about price, and people say, well, the, the amount of money that we're paying now, we're jorged it, there's a whole lot of information in the record that would probably contradict that, to say the least. Price is dependent on location, price is dependent on how much it's going to cost for you to develop that property, just like the Drake's Creek property that we're building Borough on now. And Jim can help you walk through a little bit of that. We looked at two sites, we had a pretty narrow scope. We looked at two sites, the maps will show those, and he can kind of walk you through why we selected the site that we, we chose. And I think we'll see that the Drake's Creek example is a good example to keep in the back of your mind, that it's not always the price per acre that you pay, it's location and what are you going to have in it once you actually have a school functioning on that piece of earth. Jim?
Again, I'm Jim Harrison with Civil Site Design Group. I reside at one nineteen West Ridge Drive in Hendersonville. I'm going to talk through, on the board up here is, is a map, there's actually a couple of copies of these, two maps that were laying on each of your desks. Those two maps show steep terrain within the area that we're talking about in the central Sumner County. It also shows a site A and a site B. And I'm going to kind of walk through this a little methodically to kind of talk about the location. Dale already mentioned this, that there really was one simple focus road as you go to the north from Long Hall Pike, and that is Upper Station Camp Creek Road. Upper Station Camp Creek Road, for about a mile, mile and a half or so, as you go from the north along Hall Pike, is in very good straight condition. It's a full-size road. It's not like a lot of the county roads that you see as you move to the north, and we've all driven those. As I start to walk through the maps that you got in front of you, Site A is, is on Upper Station Camp Creek Road, it's in between Upper Station Camp Creek Road and Latimer Lane. It's about a mile north of Long Hall Pike on the west side of Upper Station Camp Creek Road. Site B is also on Upper Station Camp Creek Road, but it's further, it's about two point two miles to the north of Long Hall Pike, but it lies on the west side of Upper Station Camp Creek Road as well. As Dale mentioned, the primary factor that we reviewed on this, it's not the only factor, but the primary factor we reviewed with respect to these sites was the location. The first thing was the distance from users. And as you'll see on this map, what's color-coded in blue are fairly sizable approved developments that are going to happen within the vicinity of these sites. And the numbers actually show that there's more than forty-three hundred lots that are currently being developed within a mile of any of those northern campuses. The northern campuses being Beach, this campus, and Station Camp. So all those northern campuses, within this site, the majority of those lots are located within a mile of Site A. And I'm going to kind of focus in on Site A, there's a reason that that's going to happen, you'll see that as you go through this. Site A is close enough to Long Hall Pike to, to facilitate easy commuter access to the site. In other words, Site A doesn't have a lot of people driving the wrong direction, not the wrong direction, I should say, to the north, when they wouldn't ordinarily drive to the north. If they're driving south from Cotton Town or some area like that, and they're driving towards Long Hall Pike, they would go the opposite direction if you were going up to Site B. So one of the advantages of Site A or Site B is that you don't really reduce, you don't reverse the traffic flow significantly. You have a lot of development around the Long Hall Pike area, you're not turning that development up to the north for a great distance. The other advantage of that is Long Hall Pike was already designated, Long Hall Park is already, it's already designated as continuing major curfew fare, and it's confirmed by the adopted growth plan. So this is in concert with what we're doing along Long Hall Pike. Really, there's not, if you look at Site A and Site B, there's not a, a site other than A that has the kind of redundant access that Site A has. And what I mean by that is you have access to Upper Station Camp Creek Road, but you also have access to Latimer Lane via Hunter's Lane. And Hunter's Lane is narrower than, than Upper Station Camp Creek Road, but with some pretty minimal shoulder improvements, you could have two accesses to the site, which is a big thing when you're talking about a school. Having two accesses allows you to cut the traffic in half as it goes two different directions. Site A has reasonable utilities located close to the property. It would require minimal roadway improvements outside the site. Only construction of the gravity sewer up front, up, along Upper Station Camp Creek Road from Creekside would be required. I'm going to talk about Site B for just a minute. Site B would require about two point four million dollars in roadway improvements, water, sewer, and other improvements to get utilities up to that site, to get safe roads that would have the proper alignment for those vertical and horizontal curves that we'd want those buses traveling on. So, and Site B would also have primarily one single access that is out to Upper Station Camp Creek Road. And, and again, I'll mention this again, this is a little hard, I'm going to mention it twice, it's a little hard to visualize, but Site B would mean we redirect in the morning and in the afternoon, we redirect traffic up to the north from Long Hall Pike.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question?
Keep your bananas in your hands.
It's, it's short, because I want to know what Site A is.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Is it the two hundred and sixty-five acres?
Site A is the, is the property of the two hundred and sixty-five acres, yes.
That's the one we're voting on tonight. What is Site B?
Site A is the one you're voting on tonight. Site B is another site that we evaluate as we were going through this process. Yes, sir.
Uh... Can you just lean the traffic a little?
Sure, absolutely. It is hard. If you're at site A, essentially you're a mile north of Long Hall Pike. So you're closer to those large developments. If you're at site B, you're two point two miles to the north of Long Hall Pike. So those large developments where you're going to have most of your population coming from, they'll have to drive to the north when in their daily commute. They probably, most of them would not automatically go that way. Most of them would go to Long Hall, that's the altitude, they would go to Goodless Ford, they go to Hendersonville, they go back to Nashville. But they'd essentially use that Long Hall corridor. So essentially, most of your population would travel to the north further than they would ordinarily travel. Does that make sense?
If, if site B was the site A, would that...
If site B was the site, yes, sir. Uh, site...
Can you elaborate on how we think group site B is?
Site B that we evaluated was, uh, it wasn't an exact acreage. It was around two hundred or so acres that we looked at. But it had, uh, it had some flood plain and some other things around it that kind of buried it. Had a road along it, road that passed through, sort of, which is... Does that answer any questions?
Yes, sir.
Uh, site A, uh, I'll continue on. Site A, uh, development as a campus gives the county the flexibility, uh, to connect roads, potentially greenways, parks, uh, in the future as well. What I mean by that is because we have the redundant access, we have the access on the Upper Station Camp Creek Road side, we have the access on the Latimer Lane, it's going to open the doorway when we construct a drive through that, that site for the schools to put in the greenways and trails and parks and things of that sort. The, site A also gives more flexibility with respect, uh, not having floodways, not having existing roads. It gives us flexibility to move around as we need to. Uh, I'm going to summarize these things and just answer any questions that you may have. But, uh, let me say this before I summarize. Uh, the, uh, one of the key features, this is not like locating a house. These are bigger sites. These are bigger buildings. There are bigger parking lots. Uh, so a lot of making sure that you're getting the right site for this is making sure that you have some flexibility to move parking lots around, these buildings around, so that you can work with the grades as well as you possibly can and keep that cost moving. Uh, in summary, uh, our result of our evaluation was is that site A is the preferred location due to the ideal location relative to developments in land that can be developed. Uh, and that's what these maps are intended to demonstrate, uh, is that finding. Uh, they also have redundant access to the property. They, they are located relatively close to existing utilities, uh, and the configuration of property allow for campus development. Uh, so, before I take questions, and, and really that's all I add, I want to explain a couple of things on these maps. And, uh, one of these maps is kind of lighter color than the other one. Both of them show kind of some heavy green hatch areas. Uh, that is the steeper slope areas. That's the hilltops. That's where you primarily probably see less against development. I'm not going to say you wouldn't see any development, but you'll see, you won't see a lot of very dense development in those areas. And then there's some lighter areas that actually go all the way down to, uh, the Berry Hill area down in Hendersonville. You can see one little small dock kind of at the bottom of the map. And that's that hilltop right behind Berry Hill. It has development all around it, but it's still not developed up around the water tank there. Uh, the reason we added that in there was basically just kind of to demonstrate these other areas that lie in between Long Hall and, uh, and Vietnam Veterans. The second map is, uh, is really intended more to show the roads a little bit. And the second map, you'll notice on site A in particular, there's, I don't know if you can pick it out on the map, but there's a solid black line that, that's sort of traced over the top of Upper Station Camp Creek Road. That's what's off to the right of site A. And then there's a solid white line that's traced on the Latimer Lane and Hunter Lane. That shows essentially the redundant access that we're talking about where that site has easy access to both directions.
Okay, let me, uh, say that if you have a question, if you push yourself, if you push the highs, uh, there is a high to have a question?
Yes, sir.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Who is the developer of the company that is developing the property here?
That is the, uh, the front part of it is, uh, I believe it's Jim Carroll, the Carrollton. The back part of it, I actually do not know the name of the developer in the back part of it.
I know this blue developer.
Yes, sir. The one that, the one that we're talking about right, that kind of crosses street on Liberty Lane.
The Lark?
Yes, sir. But it's, it's about fifteen hundred lots total. What's inti- there's two developments there. One is Carrollton and then there's one just to the north side of Carrollton.
That's the name of the company?
Yes, sir. That's the name of subdivision.
Now, I'm a part of it, but who is the developer?
I, I, the only name I know is Jim Carroll.
All right. What about this other developer?
Uh, the one that's at Upper Station Camp and Long Hall is Creekside. And I believe the developer on that is Syntex. I believe it.
Pulte?
Is it Pulte? Okay, yeah, it changed. It was Syntex originally, it was promptly transferred.
Are they even planning on, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I should go with you on a question. Our lay planning on sharing in the cost of this development, but we're going to be pulling sewer and water, uh, greater utility, power utility. Will they be sharing or are they sitting back waiting for us to pull all of this up and then we're going to do it?
Now, I think there, uh, most of the Carrollton development is, is downstream from where we would be.
They will not be using sewer for sure.
They would not be using what they would extend. I wouldn't think we would be doing that in the time that they would need. That would just be mine. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, can it be written, uh, in the back of my mind, and I may be wrong on this, I think that we did such a, the Station Camp, can it be written in such a way with the utilities that, uh, future development share the expense and the cost of, uh, uh, what we have outlayed here? Sewer and power?
I, I, if, from an engineering standpoint, that's a common thing that you see as a cooperative effort where you see sewer is paid for by some, some by private, some by public when you have an extension like that.
Do we plan to do that?
I would think that would be a very smart and very wise thing to do.
And, um, who, uh, I'm, I'm curious, since there were no questions asked, uh, who, who brought this particular piece of property to our attention? I mean, who brought it and said, I have this property, I want you to buy it. Uh, I have this property to sell to you. I just kind of...
I, I, that's, uh, I don't have a student...
Mr. Howard, do you want to choose one?
I would, Mr. Chairman. Uh, actually, one of these pieces of property was for sale. Dixon Farm, which is a hundred and fifteen acres. That piece of property is on Upper Station Camp. And the hundred and fifty acre farm behind that is owned by Mr. William Brown. That's the one that people are referring to as having a life estate on it. Now, remember, when you're talking about a life estate, it's a life estate on one acre in his house out of a hundred and fifty acres. And Mr. Brown is eighty-two years old and he requested if he sold the property that he remain on that piece of property as long as he could live in his home and stay there and have a life estate. He has no heirs. Uh, so, when I found out, after we looked at property, that the hundred and fifteen acres was available, advertised, and I approached Mr. Brown about selling his property, he agreed to sell his property as long as I paid the same price as a hundred and fifteen acres. So we negotiated that and included that, which gave us connectivity.
Okay. And, and I will be the first one to say that the county executive introduced me to the prospect of the Station Camp property. But after that, we did all of the negotiating and contacting with owners of that property to see what it was. I'm just wondering what the involvement is here from the county executive.
Mr. Hyde?
I mean, why the school system did not pick it up?
Well, once I talked to Mr. Brown, then Dr. Phillips and I went and visited Mr. Brown and agreed upon something because, first of all, I had no earnest money to put down, as you well know. And didn't approach the county commission for earnest money because it's not available. I do not have money available for that. I think that's when, uh, Dr. Phillips went to the Board of Education and asked for earnest money to be placed on the property. We had gentleman's agreement before we went into a written agreement, uh, which tied up the property, if that makes sense.
Okay, I hear you. Um, and my final question is, do we need two hundred and sixty-five acres? Did you hear?
Well, uh, let me address one thing that's kind of come up a couple of different times. One thing, very minimal property on this that's, that's unusual. There's a stream that runs through, it's probably a couple acres worth of buffer. Uh, there's some TBA easements, uh, but they're very minimal portions of the property.
There's a lot, I'm not sure.
There's a T, there's a TBA easement running through the property, but that's very minimal. You can put parking underneath it. One reason is that, one of the advantages that you gain by having room and configuration, and that's one of the things I meant by having advantage and flexibility, is that you can move the schools and parking around on the property and thereby minimize the grading cost, uh, when you are ready to develop a school. So that, in, in our experience, and we've done, um, our company has evaluated in the last five years probably forty different high school sites. Uh, there've been about five or six of those that have been developed. But looking at this site, this is one of those that falls in that sweet spot where you have enough flexibility that the grading fits, but it's primarily getting on the right land so we can optimally use the land and develop the land and minimize those construction costs. Uh, so that's, that's what it gives you, is that flexibility to move around.
Is the TBA property, um, is, is it centered with this program?
It runs kind of along the northwest corner through, kind of runs to the west side. It runs kind of the northwest corner to the middle of the site.
To the middle?
Yeah.
Now, I, I will imagine you being an engineer very well know that, uh, we have one campus in the county now, the Magnet School. Back when it was the old Mont's House that forever had a controversy about, uh, the power plants being close to children. And, uh, there's a, you know, there's ongoing debate about whether it's as much as a microwave that's off or whether it's a potential danger. However, we investigated this when I was, uh, either director or superintendent of the school because there were a disproportionate number of teachers at that school who were developing cancer. Uh, so I don't know about that today, but you are aware of that debate with the, uh, those five of the...
I did. I don't have anything to say about that one way or the other, but there, but there's plenty of room. There's plenty of room, there's plenty of room around the TBA lines. And we develop school sites, residential sites, industrial, we, we, we develop all manner of sites around TBA lines all the time. Uh, and, and, you know, it's, uh, it's one of those things that we very commonly do. I mean, this is part of, when we went out and evaluated the site, we carefully looked at each aspect of the site, the creeks, uh, any of the easements, any of the access points. Uh, and as part of what we were doing and carefully looking at the site, we identified all the existing features regardless of... But you do have good flexibility. You have good space to optimally use the land and develop the land for the school.
And in your opinion, all of this area here, in your mind, there's no other, if we were to go out there and ride around and look, there's no other property in this area as suitable as this one, yes, sir?
I don't know of any other, and, and we've looked at the topo maps. We've looked at the steepness of the slopes. Uh, we've looked at the access to roads, utilities, and the other things that we have within the vicinity. Uh, and I know, know the site that sits optimally like this site, uh, for a campus at this time.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was looking at these, uh, sites up here, and I think before I answer one of those questions, can you, do you know the names of these developments?
The one that is, uh, to the, the larger, that's, the ones to the left on the drawing, closer to the new shackle on the road is Durham Farm. Uh, the one that is near the intersection of Long Hall Pike and Up, and Upper Station Camp Creek Road is Creekside. Uh, the one just to east of Upper Station Camp on the north side of Long Hall is Carrollton. And the one down on Saunders Road is Millstone.
Um, you mentioned, you mentioned, I appreciate it. I mean, you mentioned, you mentioned forty-three hundred lots are currently being developed.
Yeah. Yeah, you mentioned, like you're all equal to them.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you heard it, said it was forty-three hundred lots currently being developed. Um, you know, I, this, this account here, the dead end of, I think you said it was Creekside?
Yes, sir.
Aren't most of those counties already developed in there or just an additional?
They're, they're probably about sixty or so percent of the way through. They're developing a southern portion of that.
Well, so this is, that's what sort of cuts down a little bit of the area.
That's one of the smaller ones. That's actually about four hundred and fifty lots of all. Uh, we totaled up, uh, three or four other ones that we could think of, like Falcon Ridge, that was about a hundred and fifty lots. I mean, I, I would, I don't, I would say the number's higher than what I mentioned because there's a lot of those smaller subdivisions that I did not totally include. That's took the larger one.
The one down here is Bureau Farm.
Mm-hmm.
Eleven hundred house, something like that, probably on the right.
Yes, sir.
We sort of have to do it in a, in a different direction. You know, I was told it was about a ten or fifteen year building on that subdivision. Is it, you, you heard that?
I, I've not heard that specifically.
I heard it's ten to fifteen years in our plan from a different perspective. The other thing, uh, have you ever heard of a development called Massacre Park?
Yes, sir.
Have you, were you around there any time?
Uh, during part of it, yes, sir.
Do you remember how, how long it took once that, uh, that super development started to finally age out?
I don't know when it started.
Yeah, I, I'm just guessing, I think somewhere in twenty years, just to let you know. One of the things that went in there was, uh, we asked for, for them to build a school in that development, on the Goodless Land, and build a school down there, a couple of divisions. So I guess when I'm getting it, I, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that these, these are speculations. These are possibilities. These aren't education study rooms, I mean, as far as they go now, of these...
Well, they're approved, they're approved developments. I, and I, I would, just in a sense of being balanced about this, uh, it does take some time to develop these, but there are also other developments that are not highlighted on this. And there's other properties outside of these developments that are going to develop as well. And those smaller developments are going to come into play. So there are lots that we have totaled into that forty-three hundred, as we've stated. So, um, this corridor, this Long Hall Pike corridor is going to continue to have a lot of development. I think that's something that we need to recognize. And, and I think that's one of the reasons that we feel like site A is a, is a good site.
Well, yeah, and I'm, and I'm, after you're talking to us, we like site A. You know, it's, we like the layout and everything, but I'm, I'm agreeing with two hundred and sixty-five acres just sounds like a little bit, uh, too many acres for one complex. Would you agree with that? Two hundred and sixty-five acres, we don't need two hundred and sixty-five acres for one complex?
Two hundred and sixty-five acres gives you the flexibility to put, uh, schools, high school, middle school, elementary school, put schools on that site. Plus do greenways, plus do, uh, some parks along the creek probably where, where you would put them. Uh, you do have some flexibility with that. If, if you had less on that, that would diminish your flexibility and thereby increase your development cost.
Well, it's pretty expensive, greenways and parks, you know, for, to have that kind of... Could we not just do it on one track, a hundred and fifteen acres? Would that not work? Hundred and fifteen acres, one track, would that not work in lakes? Those hundred and twenty-three acres, what I understand, I, I, I was told that Station Camp complex was a hundred, a hundred acres at one time. We were given over twenty-three acres and we used, uh, we did, uh, we could put a complex on a hundred acres, do we know?
You, I mean, it depends on what the hundred acres looks like. I mean, Station Camp's a great example. It had a hundred and twenty-five acres, but it had a whole lot of flood plain on it. Uh, it had infrastructure that needed to be built. It had roads. It didn't have any roads hardly out there at all. It had Lower Station Camp Creek Road, and that was it. Uh, Upper Station Camp Creek... Uh, Upper Station Camp Creek Road, big Station Camp Creek Road had to be built. Bison Lane had to be built. The key in all this is the development cost. The key is to have the flexibility and have usable land. In, in our experience with the many, many sites that we've worked on, the high school, the middle school, elementary school sites, it's having usable land so that you can fish, efficiently do what you need to with the site. And don't, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to slam Station Camp or anything like that. I'm just saying that's a good example of where you have to, you have to watch out for flood plain and things of that sort. And this site does not have any of that type of significant unusable area.
So, we could actually get by with less on that? If we go back to my original question, we could actually get by with a hundred fifteen acres? If we didn't want to build by the other hundred fifty acres, we could get by with a hundred fifteen acres, could we not?
You? I, as, well, it's a simple question, but as an engineer, it's hard for me to tell you exactly how much acres you can get by with. Because it's important as an engineer, what I can tell you is it's important to be flexible about the space that you're using. And as an engineer, without me dealing and, you know, it's, 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 it's just inappropriate for me to step out there and tell you how much acres you exactly should have. The flexibility is important.
I appreciate it. Flexibility is pretty expensive, but I don't mean to argue, Mr. Chairman, but you've set through a lot of discussions on this property, as far as how it's going to develop out. You've talked about greenways, parks, stuff like that. I've had some, I had a discussion with someone who told me that some of the property, or one of the points was, was we develop a property, in other words, we put the streets in there, we put the infrastructure in there, we put the greenways in there, and then we turn around and resell the property back to the public. Have you heard any discussions like that?
That's, that's not my focus. It's partly evaluation. My focus has been, my focus, and what I mentioned in the evaluation, and, and, I don't want to sound argumentative, but I tried to just.
Sure, I'm, I'm.
There were opportunities along the creek as we, as we built your homes across there and make interconnectedity. That's one of the things that, looking at traffic flow going both ways, but also one of the things that I would anticipate that the greenway trails will continue to go to the north of Upper Station Camp Creek Road, and there's an opportunity to run those greenway trails across to those existing homes on the lack of rain. And it's just one of those forward-thinking things that you look at as you go through this to try to identify opportunities associated with that at the site.
I, I won't get into, I got a whole section down there. I would have some greenways and, but, but, let's go back to my original question. One, absolutely positive, could we get by a hundred fifteen acres? As you did. I think you, I think you'd agree with that could be a positive answer.
I'm going to stick with my second answer.
All right. Now, let me go back to the other question, the other one. Once we get there, have you heard any discussions about reselling the property back as development? Once we get?
Mr. Ball, you're asking the same question, don't you?
Well, he did ask the question.
But he doesn't answer it.
No, he didn't say it. No, he said it was a debate, because I don't remember what he said.
He said it wasn't.
I'm sorry, I follow clear. I didn't know any of that. I mean, I realize that my main thought was.
I'm listening for a minute, so that's what it is. All right. So, do you, do you remember any discussions with that?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, how long?
Mr. Chairman, is he on the same or the next expert?
Okay.
What's your point, Lord? Thank you, Lord. Yeah, if, if, if this expert that has done forty-seven schools has been working this county long, he has, I'm witnessing him on his board, because as your point, Mr. Chairman, would you allow him to speak?
Yeah.
Uh, I was.
Mr. Ball, let me, let me answer that question, Mr. former educator. You could probably put that on a hundred fifteen acres, three, four, five story buildings. I mean, and that's what happens in Station Camp is I think that only every school is making three stories tall. So, yeah, you could, but you would have to make some adjustments to your buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question is remarks played by county executive Longhaw, Sock asked, can you put a question?
I'd love to answer some questions. Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Sounds like you, you need Bill Perry Mason, but I'm glad to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
You and Mr.?
Go ahead, Mr. Ball.
We don't need to do this derogatory indictment, not for me. That's my second. We're on the farm. We're not even on the school land.
That is a great point. That's my point. We're on the farm, we're not trying to do the bond, but the land is part of the bond.
Because we put the cart for the horse by the place and over the bond being down here after, if I'm not mistaken, is under the source of the land.
Okay.
Is that not correct?
That is correct, but it just don't pass, and we can't without land, so we would not have a source without land. So, uh, Mr. Ball, we really are not talking about that at this point, but you need to ask, you need to ask the county executive a question, like this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned Longhaw. Dixon, Dixon Farm was for sale?
Yes, sir.
I, I never saw that. What is it? You said it was advertised?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me where it was advertised at?
Had a sign in front of the property. That's what I call advertising. I don't, I don't, I don't know if it was in MLS, to be honest with you, Mr. Ball. I don't know.
It was, just let you know.
Yes, sir. That's good.
And I'm going to leave it alone, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We have several people in the queue. Mr. Lamont, you're next.
I just have some questions. Tonight I've heard several times that half the land is unusable land. It, can you?
That's, that's not correct. There's a very small portion, really primarily along the creek where you'd have a buffer. It, it's a very small portion of land. I'd say somewhere around a couple of acres, something like that.
The other thing is the life of state, the one acre, where, where is that located on this property?
It's located kind of in the, this, really kind of in the center of the western piece, if I'm not mistaken, the western half. There's enough room to answer, probably follow, what we got into with the site evaluation is we got to look at, there is enough room to place both an elementary and a middle school on the west side of that life estate. There's enough space there to, to actually do that, so.
Okay, can I just clarify one of them then? If we go with the one, one hundred and fifteen acre lot, we're losing that second access road, correct?
You don't have redundant access if you don't go that far out to the west, yes, sir.
And even with a hundred and twenty-something acres at Station Camp, they've still had some problems with getting everything that they want on that campus. Is that correct?
It is tight in there, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Graves?
Mr. Chairman, thank, uh, one of my questions is, did y'all look from Creekside back toward Galton? Was that an area you looked into?
We didn't look at specific properties. What we did look at is the utilities. And as you went from upper sta, there was two things. One is there's not a, there's not a good road that's in that good a condition to the north from Long Halle Pike, but as you move, for about every five thousand feet that you move to the east, you have about a million dollars worth of utilities.
I, I was thinking more of the, one of mine bypassed up that far.
To the north.
To the, to the north, closer to Galton.
We, we did not focus too much on that area because quite frankly, the development areas are remote to that, and you would have people backtracking to go to the east and to the north with their predominant direction you see on their commute.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't that push some of these, if you went that direction, like Creekside and this other area to the right, I don't remember what you said the name of it was. Wouldn't that push some of those, if you built a complex closer to the one on that, wouldn't that push some of those people living in that area to the, that campus if you built one in that area? Yeah, it's off of Long Halle Pike and posted on that.
We, it was our feeling, and that, that, that one is the largest one from a lot area with the, but it was our feeling, and it was our feeling as we were going through the study, that the addition cost of the utilities in addition to the mile driven in the opposite direction of what a commuter might want generally go. And I'm not talking about everybody. I'm talking about just the majority of people moving in that direction, so.
Yeah, I would think that, yes.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, my other question is to do with a Site A. Site B wouldn't be a question or an answer for any of the situation. I'm not going to ask you the question Mr. Ball asked, and I'm not going to ask Mr. Holt that question about how much, because I think it's pretty much that part of it. It's what it is, it's what it is. I would ask you about the infrastructure, utilities, the roads. Will we probably have to build a road like Big Station Camp to get to it? I drove up Upper Station Camp pretty narrow, pretty crooked. Of course, that's only a mile, I believe, or maybe a little over. You think we'd have to build a road like that? It's pretty narrow.
You're talking about for Site A?
Site A, yes.
Yes, sir. Uh, you need to do a turn lane out in front of Site A. Uh, but because of the, that's one of the advantages of getting this located in the right direction. If you don't have people driving in the opposite direction of what they would normally drive and then driving back out, that obviously doubles the amount of traffic that you've got if you've got people moving through one time. And so, if you locate the site in the right direction, so people are already kind of driving in that direction, you can do it on a two-lane road as long as you're straight enough and as long as the vertical curves are good enough. And that first mile as you travel to the north on Long Halle Pike is in that condition, just very minimal shoulder improvements if anything. I really don't think there's that, quite frankly. It's just the turn lanes as you have interest drives to the school.
I guess my question, semi-answered it, but Big Station Camp is right off of three eight six and going to Long Halle Pike, of course. We, we widened that road to make it more accessible for buses. A lot of residents going to be in this area too. Also, I'm like you, there'd be a lot of these, uh, some of these subdivisions now that's going to be using Upper Station Camp, because I don't think nobody wants to go with twenty-five, want to go to the interstate. But, uh, but my feeling is that we're going to have to have a road to Upper Station Camp. That's just my opinion. That would, would accommodate the safety of citizens on that road. Uh, that's just my opinion. I'm not asking a question on that. The utilities, I do realize that we'll have to, it's White House utilities.
Yes, sir.
Did y'all give some estimates of how much that was going to cost?
We, we looked, we did some, some very preliminary estimates. We, we got information from White House Utilities on what existing water lines were there in the area to look at what would need to be extended, and yes, sir, we did, we did estimates. Very similar, just, just very quick calculations, but they're very similar to what we've done on all the other high school sites that we've looked at.
Do you remember any of those costs?
Uh.
There is a six-inch water line on.
Yeah, but on Site A, there was very, very, very minimal cost because the utilities are already there. It's essentially, you build within the site the extensions and you connect those two water lines together. There is an existing water line on Upper Station Camp that, and on Hunter's Lane that you could connect to. Now, Hunter's Lane might require a little bit of upsizing because you got to get down to the larger sized line that's on Latimer Lane, but it's a very minimal cost. It's probably less than fifty thousand or something like that. It's very minimal.
There's four inch water line on that one. I guess my question is, I talked to White House Utilities, they're representing the role there. Best, and an engineer part too, but I'm.
No. There is a.
White House Utility requires all that for Longhaw Pike. Now, I'm not sure about sewer, but I do know that on water. If you, if you only left, if you didn't upgrade that six-inch line and you put three complexes in there over time, and the houses is built in that area, if you didn't do the hydraulic study, which I know you, I know would be done, but you suck all the water out of the other houses, because there's not enough water to carry it to go through a six-inch line to provide for three schools and any other new houses that come in here.
One thing, I'm going to try to answer.
Okay.
Uh, one thing, the traffic benefits from having a redundant connection. The water benefits from having a redundant connection too, because you're pulling essentially half of the water that you'd need for a campus like that from each direction, just to simplify it. So, the ability to connect through in two different directions, again, on this particular site sets it apart with the water line distribution system as well. Uh, the other sites that we looked at, you just had one connection, and that gets a problem back. That, you're right, that is a problem. If you just got one connection point, that can be a real problem, because if you lose that water supply in some situation, that's not a good thing. So, the redundant connection is a good thing.
On the sewer, and I'm almost, I promise. Uh, on the sewer, was there an estimate? Do you remember an estimate that was done on that?
Uh, no, I don't think it's off the top of my head. We, we didn't break it down because we were comparing the difference between Site A and Site B, but it was, it was far less than the, I mean, it was just, it was.
About a mile?
It's about a mile. It's right at five thousand feet, yes, sir.
What, you say five or six hundred thousand, maybe?
It's less than that. It, 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 some of it depends, like we were talking about earlier, is, is whether or not you get some cooperation with some product developers as you do. And there's definitely an opportunity to do something like that.
Well, they pay a part, yeah, that's correct, yeah. Some people are waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kim?
Well, yes, I, I have two questions.
Appreciate it.
The microphone is down there.
That'll do, thanks.
Hi, here it is.
Uh, the thirteen thousand per acre, you talked about the development costs of so many other schools on thirteen thousand, that's paid, probably cost about sixty thousand. Is there an estimate, obviously because of this flexibility, what this thirteen thousand, why should it cost us once we develop that?
Not for this specific site. I will say this, we've looked at, normally when we look at other sites, and there's thirty or forty other sites, and I specifically say it because they all vary, they're off-site utilities. Usually we see a comparison cost that's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand dollars per acre for a high school site. That doesn't, that, that, but this site is actually positioned much better than any of those, quite frankly, because it's got the distant water lines running up to it. You don't have any off-site connections. You really just got the same material sewer and the rail to act with, with just the addition of a turn lane out of Upper Station Camp Creek Road. So, this site, this particular site is positioned much better. I don't know if that answers the question or not.
So, basically what you're telling me is you feel like it's going to be reasonable, but you really don't know how much more than the two thousand acres actually being.
Yeah, I can't, I can't assign the number to it. I'll just tell you, based on the sites that we've looked at, the comparison sites that we've looked at, the flexibility that you have, you don't have a very good development cost. You are hitting our key point, and it is, it is very, very common in fact that it's the commonplace for the development cost to be the more significant cost that you get to. So, keeping that down is a smart, smart, smart thing to do.
Well, now, the same thread when you talk about the flexibility, and then there's been some concerns about the cost of one of your lots, and then closing comes about. But because of this flexibility, are you standing up and saying that you can offset the initial cost of purchasing more acreage in the development and building? Can they be offset?
There will be some offset, yes. Completely offset, I can't, I can't say where that would take place, but there would, there is an advantage to having the flexibility and the, it does reduce the development cost, and if it does reduce the development cost, then it does offset some of the cost.
But we don't have any idea how much that offset would be.
It would cost money to go and get into that and start researching that, but we, we do know it will be there. We do know it will be submitted.
We just don't have the number yet.
All right, Michelle?
Um, I just want to make a couple comments about some things that were mentioned earlier. Um, I actually live pretty close to this piece of property. I've lived out there for about eighteen years. Um, and when we first moved down there, I thought, where on earth are we living, where are we moving to? Uh, and I can tell you, it is a prime location. I can get to the city of Kendersville, Galton, White House, and Portland from my house, which sits about a couple miles from either one of these sites, in about five to seven minutes. So, I think the, the location of it is a great location. Um, it was mentioned once there was a sale sign up in that yard, yes, there. It was mentioned once there was a sale sign up in that yard, yes, there was actually called about it, because I drive by several times a day, drive by that, that farm. And I can verify with Mr. Holt that there wasn't a sale sign in there by owner. It was also mentioned, can we get by with a hundred and fifteen acres? I didn't run to get elected to this commission to get by. We've done enough of getting by. Our county deserves better than that, and we need to plan, and we need to plan well. Our students, our citizens, and our county deserve that, and that's what I ran on, and I'm not voting to get by.
Thank you, Mr. Hatt.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, about what's been said here as comparison, I've known for some time, we've worked together, he's a good person, and a very knowledgeable person. To that effect, he knows that, to this point, I think I hold a record on the amount of school buildings built in this county, a hundred and fifty-five million plus. I think I'm to be, that's fairly soon. But, so I have some experience too, and a little bit of office, not much, but a little bit. We tried to look at high schools for fifty to seventy-five acres when our staff was looking for acres. We tried to look for twenty acres, such as the White House Middle School, that's exactly the twenty acres when we were building Middle School. We found that was what you needed for a middle school. We tried to find fifteen acres for an elementary school. You add all that up, for a campus setting, it comes up to about a hundred acres, a little more. That's not just getting by. I was the director of school, so we purchased Station Camp, purchased approximately a hundred acres. Then went back and purchased some additional property that is still there over to the side. That's never been used completely. And we talk about how high Station Camp is, but it wasn't too high to go back and build a bus terminal there, parking many, many buses in addition to the school facilities there. There have been a lot of questions asked tonight. And I think a lot of questions that are still floating around and people finding, and I would personally, as one person, I would just like to have a little bit more time to look at this issue. Because I'm going to tell you the truth, after working many, many years with a lot of architects and a lot of engineers, and Jim may not like me saying this, but it's a fact. An engineer is going to say pretty much what I want to say. And an architect is going to say pretty much what I want to say. I would like for us to just step back from this for just a little while, take a deep breath, let some of us look at this more, let some of us ask more questions, drive around, look at the property, the snow and everything, help me driving out that way. I'd like to see the property. I have friends that live out in that general area, but I'd like to go for myself and look at it. The world is not going to come to an end, folks, thirty days, put this off for thirty days. And I just think it's time to take a deep breath, step back. And what is, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we refer this back for discussion for thirty days, giving us a chance just to look at this. Who knows, I may come back and vote for this after I look at the property out there. So, I ask that we refer it for thirty days.
Mr. Hatt, okay, we have a second. Mr. Hatt, you're talking about the bond issue, not the property.
I'm, 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 oh.
So, you're talking about the bond issue, okay. So, your motion is that we wait another month?
It's rude, isn't it?
The bond, and there's a second, we're done with this title. Okay. Get, I want to object to that.
Mr. Chairman, as has been pointed out, this has been a process that has been in works for over seven months. And then, anybody here in this room, much less the commissioner, commissioners, have been invited to countless meetings for due diligence. I'm not sure what thirty more days does unless the whole goal is to coming out.
Okay. Did you read the report? Let's, all right, we're on board, we got, all right. We're on the motion to...
Refere.
To refer, is that, would that be the legal term?
Refer. It's refer, not deferral.
That's what we say, okay, we're saying, how much should we get by? It's refer, so it is divided, so we have a motion and a second. Now, I will open the floor up for discussion. On the motion to, to refer, not defer, refer. Any advice? Okay, if not, then we will have this vote.
All right, the motion to refer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving eight affirmative votes, motion to refer fails to carry. We're back with the motion on the floor, which is the combined bond issue.
Mr. Becker, any action?
Appreciate it. I'm not sure if you're the right person to answer this question, but the resident who, the elderly gentleman, I believe he's in his eighties or so, but a couple comments been made about liability, if it was an injury or whatnot on the county's property. I'm not, I'm not overly familiar with liability insurance or whatnot. Can someone speak to what, what would have, what would the county's...
Mr. Becker, I guess county attorney, so we have the vote.
It was set up in the agreement that he would have insurance, and that was one of the things that would need to be done, is we would have to actually, you know, figure out which acre, which is kind of obvious since it's his house, would be his property, and there would be insurance charges that would cover any damage in my property.
Okay, that, I think it might be clear, because you said insurance would be purchased by him.
So, he would purchase, he would purchase, is that the insurance?
It'd be, it'd be the same kind of insurance that you have on your house, where if somebody gets hurt walking on your sidewalk.
Okay. And then, so, a couple of questions, so, different topics. So, the, how do we go about, because I like the idea, and several people mentioned about getting future developers to sort of share the cost. How do we, how do we work, proceed, how would we ensure that would happen? Apologize for being ignorant on it, but...
I don't know that you could ensure, that's just one of those things, that as new developments come on, and if it were possible, it would be up to the Board of Education to kind of try to enter into those sort of arrangements.
So, that would be between the developer and the Board of Education, would make this...
That would just be the way it would be done.
Okay. Question here, on Upper Station Camp, you mentioned a few times, I appreciate that, a turn lane would need to be added.
Yes, sir.
What about, the access on Hunter Lane, what types of road development would need to be made on that side of it?
Hunter Lane is a little different. Hunter Lane has a ninety-degree bend right at where this property is located. So, my engineering opinion is that you could turn that into an intersection and have a direct drive. Essentially, it's, it's two sides to, if you look down on it, instead of a four-way intersection, it's two sides right now with the ninety-degree bend. You could make it three-sided and have a direct access coming into the site. Does that make sense? You have a new road coming into the site to the north off of Hunter's Lane with that ninety-degree bend. In other words, if you were driving north on Hunter's, Hunter Lane, you would come, you would, you would come straight into the site.
There's this, right below the red mark, the, you're talking about where it bends to the left on here?
That's right. Instead of bending to the left ninety degrees, you would just go straight into it.
So, the road access from Long Hollow up until that ninety degree turn is, is, would need minimal?
There's some, I think I mentioned this earlier, and I may have gone past it pretty quick. There's probably some minor shoulder work that needs to be done on Hunter's Drive. That would not be, it would be a, an access, but it would be, probably would be your secondary access. But the road's in pretty good shape from there on down, because it's fairly straight as you're going down to Latimer Lane. It does get curvy as it goes around that ninety-degree bend to the west further on up, as many of the county roads get when you go in pretty much any direction.
Where does the resident, where's his, guess driveway sit currently?
It's, it's real close to that ninety-degree bend. You can see that real hard to kind of see where the ninety-degree bend and that black line is. It's just to the left of that, just a little bit, and I can't, you're going to come around there and kind of...
Well, I guess, and this may, this may not be feasible, but I'm thinking, could we possibly purchase, and I'm just going to make it up, half of his name, use, get the second access road, and still, so whatever acre, so we, it would be the Dixon property, and I'm saying roughly half, or whatever you want to call it, of this property, and him still be able to, I'm not saying want to, but he has no heirs, no children or whatnot. Maybe he would be up to the idea of selling a portion of the property instead of the full possession.
And where that drive comes off to the north at his western property land is probably about three or four hundred feet, and that would kind of leave a sliver of property there, and I'm not sure he would be interested in that, I wouldn't think. That's just not, I mean, from an engineering standpoint.
Because to me, it seems like there's, there's a lot of benefit of having two access streets.
Yes, sir.
And I think if we could get the two access streets with not the full amount of two sixty-five acres, it might be a good compromise, if I might, and so that's the reason for the question there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Popson.
Hold for a question.
Mr. Popson, I thought that's what you were going to do. We have one more, we have two people, but one has not spoken at all. Do you mind if I let that person speak, and then there's one other that's in the queue, would you want to speak too, or?
I just got one little short question.
And we have another one that just popped up there, so, and that person has not spoke yet, so let's do it. So, we, I guess if we've got some in there, maybe we need to go ahead and vote on the question, or?
We have a second.
Do we have a second to his motion? Second from Mr. Chris Tate. All right, that is non-voting, so at this point, we will vote.
All right, the motion on the floor is called for the question, which will end debate. It requires two-thirds of the vote to be approved. The motion for the question is on the floor. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving thirteen affirmative votes, the call for the question fails to carry.
Thank you. All right, and I have one left, I have two left, Mr. Rayes.
Somebody hasn't spoke, who was that?
That was Mr. Bill Tate, and he withdrew, he's back in there now. Go ahead, Mr. Rayes, and then we'll let, we got Mr. Holt Tate and Mr. Bill Tate.
Harrison.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harrison. I was looking at these roads, if we have these roads approximately, I don't know how far it is on the two hundred sixty-five acres, all the way across. If we have two accesses, I think we're going to have a road, two, from Long Hollow Pike all the way around to the other Long Hollow Pike. Has the road superintendent been contacted on, what's her opinion on what it would take to do this? I don't know if that's your question or not.
I haven't contacted the road superintendent, and there's not even a specific reason to them. We're not that far along with any kind of design or anything. Part of the answer to that question would be, is there's a lot of those drives that could be incorporated into school drives and things of that sort. So, you would try to incorporate those into parking lots and drives that you would want. We've all driven into an elementary or a middle school campus where you've got roads looping around. Well, when you have that length of road, a lot of times you don't have to loop that road around. A lot of times you just run the traffic and let it, let it sort of stack naturally. So, it's, it's one of the advantages of that site as well, to kind of have the flexibility to do here.
So, there would be, it would be some upgrade to infrastructure from Long Hollow Pike to Upper Station Camp?
We would have drives into the school, yes, sir.
All the way back, thank you.
All right, we have three left in the queue, and none of those three have spoken, Mr. Holt Tate is the first.
Well, let me start with saying, you know, we're discussing the bonds, where we got, my, we're voting, my mistake, the bonds. Now, we stood here for an hour and twenty minutes on a different item than you did, which is the actual school lane. So, I didn't want my chance to get away, and me, whoever was speaking on the bond, when the question was called, I'm sorry, I'm ready to vote too. So, we're still discussing bonds.
Yes, sir, you can, well, the bond and the school are tied together, so that's...
The two resolutions.
Uh, you've got two resolutions, you've got, yeah, you've got the two resolutions for the bond, and part of that will be the, the bond from the school property.
I don't want to talk about the bond.
Okay, talk about the bond. The commission back to the bond. Yes, sir, yes, go ahead.
There's another, there's a third one.
Can I have any? Yes, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
The bonds. I read through stuff in January that the bond, it started out with forty-one million dollars for school, twenty-nine for county general. Well, the big land speculation deal, when something last meeting didn't get enough votes to move forward, so we changed all of that now, the bonds, and so is the nine million. Is that included in the seventy million, or are we looking at a total of seventy-nine million? Because the general, you know, the way this is written, you could say seventy and ninety, seventy and ninety. So, the total was seventy?
Okay, well, let's find next chairman, actually.
That's correct, and it is spelled out in the resolution, that breaks down the sixty-one and the nine.
Well, I'm just making sure, because there's been, you know, different things done, and I'm getting over the record. So, let me talk to the bond. Twenty twenty thirty, it's had been years from now, nine years, we could be dead for it. Twenty twenty thirty, I understand, we got these, we got a whole lot of wants too. One of the reasons I ran for office, didn't, didn't get elected the first time. Ran second time, got elected. I didn't like the way my tax dollars were being split, my property taxes got values, and I didn't agree with what we were paying for the land to build schools on. No disrespect to the people before me, I didn't like it, did something about it, that's why I'm standing here. I don't like this. Twenty thirty-six, I'll be sixty-four years old, and I'm forty-three. Old to some, sitting in the back, you know, young to others, I ain't going to call them names there, but anyways. Um, I, I, you know, I can't, I, I, I see the needs. I see the needs, I have no problem with the needs. Kids make stuff. Kids also want a lot of stuff. Employees of government need things, they also want a lot. So, let's separate the needs and the wants, and I know this is probably going to pass, and I may be speaking to death here, but I've got a lot to have myself. You can intimidate me, do whatever you want to do, you ain't going to shut me up, so. But the debt, two, this will put us over two hundred million dollars in debt, two hundred million dollars. Think about that, somewhat the quarter of a billion. I don't like that. You know, I don't like the debt that our federal government carries. I don't like it, because I probably never see the payed off. You know, twenty thirty-six, there's a lot of us that will never see this debt paid off. Unfortunately, you know, and we're not done, I mean, there's kids, we're not even a year into this commission, and we're raising taxes, borrowing money, spending money. I'm not going, if I, probably going to call it quarter and quarter, but somebody said you're on the side of the show. That would just, would not hurt somebody else's life, so I'm going to put some quarter and quarter. the side of the show, that was just what I heard, somebody else, I just couldn't. I just, I mean, when's it gonna end? You know, you say it's gonna be going on out here seven months, eight months, I'd say probably ten months to a year, uh, the big plan, so, I, I can't support this, I can't support the bonds, and I move to table.
Sir?
Yeah, we have a motion to table and a second.
So I can learn off you. We're voting to this person. Let me get a legal opinion. Okay, we will vote, and it will take two-thirds vote.
All right, the motion to table is on the floor, does require two-thirds vote, each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving seven affirmative votes, motion to table fails to carry, we're back on the motion, the two bond issues.
And Mr. Tate, let me just point out, given that in thirty years, he would still be younger than me. Uh, Mr. Bill Tate.
Mr. Chairman, the facts are that we gave three hundred new students to our school every year, divided amongst all our schools. Three hundred students times five to fifteen hundred new students. We're acquiring a equivalent of one elementary school a year in our center school, divided amongst them. It's obvious we need new schools, it's obvious we need to plan, it's obvious we need to put the schools where they need to go so that we can, we can develop and plan our own community. We have an opportunity to take two hundred and sixty-five acres, and instead of squishing the school in it, make it into a campus like we have our rivals, Wilson County, of Lebanon High School and Mount Jordan High School. If you wanna walk on those campuses, you're gonna see almost small college campuses, the soccer fields, the baseball fields, the football fields, they're all unbelievably nice. We've squished every school, every school. I referee, I travel to Southeast, refereeing high school and college soccer. Every soccer field on our, on our campuses, from Beach to Station Camp to Merrill High is too small. We squished them on there to make them minimum size to get a soccer field. Now we've got a chance to show off Sumner County and build a new school. We can build athletic facilities, we can build the school, we can keep them one-story, keep them A and A compliant, instead of going up two or three stories and putting one hundred acres, a hundred acres is way too small, and with two hundred and sixty-five, we've got the opportunity to put this here, this here, this here, and we've got a juggle, juggle power lines. It's an opportunity that we will never have again to showcase Sumner County schools. I have to agree with the commissioner, who says, we've been getting by too long, I didn't get elected to get by, it's time to move on and make it a showcase. We gotta compete, we're gonna get there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one concern, and that's the TBA transmission lines, and I would just kinda like to see where they go across the property on that map and ask how do that impact the placement of the buildings, and maybe it helps to have extra property possible.
Mr. Chairman, can you show them this map where those?
Uh, yeah, there's actually a map behind that, it's kind of blow up, but I think I can do that.
Feel like a man alive?
I do. Make sure I don't. I have it upside down, that's not a good start. And I, they run, I don't know if y'all can all see this, because the boundary of the property is like this, this is one track, this is the other track, this is the, this is the TBA, it runs right here along the north edge, the westernmost track, and it runs across here, so essentially it runs across the northern half, and then exits the property here, enters and exits there. There's actually a small stream that actually parallels that, so it means that essentially they're side by side, so the effect is fairly minimal, and then also the small stream provides some separation from the TBA, so, if that answers your question.
Good, thank you. Mr. Poswell?
Thank you, Chairman, for this one real quick question, the bond is very, I'd like to know what our current debt is, and what our current debt capacity is.
Mr. Poswell, can you answer that question?
Our current capacity is about ninety-five million dollars after the tax increase over the next couple of years. Our current debt at the July one, two thousand and fourteen, was a hundred and twenty-six million, four hundred and ten thousand dollars. During the two thousand and fifteen fiscal year, we're set to pay ten million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars worth of debt. If we issue seventy million dollars worth of new debt this fiscal year, we end up with a hundred and eighty-five million, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of debt by the end of fiscal year.
Thank you. But, Mr. Chairman, the bond, the one that I'd like to make here, the final point, let me get a chance to ask you a question. My, the whole, with this bond issuance, I think it's something, you need to step back and take it on real closely, if you're all, and I'm sure to this, talking about this here, but as you can see, our current debt capacity is ninety-five million dollars. If we go into seventy-nine million dollars from our, we're just about drowning ourselves, which is setting us up for one of two things. We're not gonna, we're not gonna issue, we're not gonna build anything, we're not gonna do anything for several years, or we're gonna do the tax increase. So folks, I think we need to really step back, I'm begging, please step back, and look at where we're going with this, and really consider this, but we just, I, you know, I, when I came here tonight, I was totally against siding. I'm, I'm sort of feeling a little bit better about siding, I don't like the two hundred and sixty-five acre, but I feel a bit better, but I wish that we could at least step back a little bit, put this thing, put this reaching off to it, let's step back and look at it. I think we could probably trim some fat off of this, and not go into that much debt, because as soon as we issue debt, if I'm not mistaken, we start paying interest on it, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have one more in the queue, and he has not spoken, Mr. Hinton.
Everybody in the building knows how the outcome of this vote's gonna be. Excuse me, so I'll call for a question.
Okay, you're in, so then we will, we won't even have to vote on that. Okay, we're ready.
The resolutions are seventy million, seventy million.
We combined.
So combined, you're seventy-nine.
No.
The resolutions are saying seventy-nine million.
No, they're not.
One says seventy, another says ninety.
But on the paper, it says, it does say seventy, and the resolution didn't say, I don't have the resolution in front of me.
Well, the resolution, the last resolution says sixty-one and nine, okay, and then the first resolution says nine, so it's either seventy-nine or seventy-nine.
Hold on, we're getting a legal opinion on that, hold on.
You have to have the first resolution, which is the nine, then you have seventy for all of it, but the nine is a separate type of resolution, just down to bond council, which you have to do, but the maximum we can, that we're borrowing is seventy.
Good question. All right.
All right, on the board is the, we have combined two resolutions, both fifteen oh two oh eight and fifteen oh two oh nine were voted, combined their bond issues by rule of the commission requires two-thirds vote. The, both resolutions are on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered, anyone not voting, all twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wish to choose to change your vote? Receiving seventeen affirmative votes, the resolutions are approved.
Okay, Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Back to the agenda for your change, fifteen oh two dash, you want to bring thirty-six thousand dollar capital fund project for architectural fees for juvenile chantry court renovation and redevelopment through the twenty-fifteen behind, that was unanimous in both, and I so moved.
Do we have a motion? A second, a second from Mr. Poswell, uh, need discussion. Okay, Mr. Hinton.
Thirty-six thousand dollars represents five percent of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if I calculate right. Now, the point I'd like to make, and I'll offer an amendment if you allow me, that the, that the architectural and engineering fees not to exceed five percent of this total project, I so moved.
Sir? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Uh, maybe the county executive, someone on general committee would address that. I have no issue with it, but maybe we can get clarification.
Okay, county attorney, so you can make a clarification.
One point, the reason why the percentage is not set out usually on renovation project is sometimes you don't know what you're going to hit to get there.
I would still prefer that my motion be passed.
And we have a motion and a second, any other questions? All right. Well, okay, you're in there.
So it's thirty-six thousand, and the fellow commissioners saying that it's five percent. Let me get the amendments correct.
The amendment ends that the resolution appropriates up to thirty-six thousand dollars from the capital project fund for architectural and engineering fees, however, it shall not exceed five percent of the total project for the juvenile chantry court renovations, and there's a to be reversion of the law. That's have it right.
We've been told that the judge stuff, this is time for the judge, five hundred thousand dollars, I think that was totally last month, uh, five hundred thousand, we don't know, but we, five percent, you know, we see where I'm, we see where I'm going. We yet to know what this is gonna cost.
Mr. Phil, the five hundred thousand dollars related to the, this is.
But that's the cost associated, I understand this. My point is, five hundred thousand won't cut.
You're talking.
I'm talking about the whole package, that's why I never go up for it. You can't tell me what's gonna solve, no place in to that one.
Your screen.
Number one is, I understand we can swing from the front, but that is, we have to pay these upfront, and I understand that we pay this upfront, or we're gonna be paid this before we know the total cost. We don't really know what the five percent of the total cost will be, because of what total cost will cost the police, and so I think the up to five, thirty-six thousand is better. And just wanna make a point about the renovations, last weekend, I was the advocate, the sponsor for the Montro, for Gallup High School, Montro was helping with the courtrooms. I don't tell you right now, those courtrooms need to be renovated. I don't care what anybody said about it, try to hold trial with any number of people in those courtrooms, and it doesn't work well. We're gonna, we're gonna have other issues with those courtrooms in the future, but right now, I think this is important, is to make that, particularly the chantry courtroom sufficient for Judge Oliver's needs, thank you. Ms. Kim?
Um, yes, can somebody, maybe our budget chair can speak to the thirty-six thousand when that number came up?
Mr. Chairman, that's good, go ahead, ask a question. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this went through the gentleman from the spokesman committee, the Lawson and Alak committee, that has met and with the judges, and had a couple of meetings walking through it. I know maybe the legislative chairman could address that, and or county executive. The executive.
Okay, Mr. Poswell, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, you asked me to go to, the judges come up with a plan, came back to General Labs with a plan, and they asked me to go out and give cost estimates, and that's what I did. Now remember, this is up to thirty-six thousand dollars. That is the estimates for doing the architectural work to do the renovations, and so that's exactly what I've done. I brought you back what the estimates were. At first, when we were looking at the courtroom for the new general sessions judge, because Mr. Howard, which is a judicial magistrate for the juvenile court, was using the current space that the new general sessions judge would use, needed an additional courtroom. We looked at the basement of adult probation, and the cost of that was going to be pretty pricey, it's gonna be over five hundred thousand dollars. Now, done some additional work, and I think Mr. Decker and Mr. Goode went to visit Judge Brown and worked with Judge Brown, and we agreed to renovate the first floor of the juvenile justice center, put a courtroom adjacent to his existing courtroom, to combine everything, to put offices in that juvenile court system from Mestron, so people can pay their fees, it's kind of, rather than having to move from there and go down to the square, our general sessions to do it, so it's gonna be a lot more convenient for our public and customers, plus it addresses the needs of the new general sessions judge to serve in the general sessions building down where the jail is. So, that's really what, what this amounts to, is an estimate up to thirty-six thousand dollars.
This thirty-six thousand dollars is not just for the general sessions.
This is to renovate.
Beyond the general sessions and juvenile court, and so now we're into a second phase of court system, right?
This is to renovate a court system for the judicial magistrate.
No, it's not the judicial magistrate.
He's gonna be serving in this new courtroom.
He's a juvenile magistrate.
Yeah, juvenile magistrate, and also to renovate the existing courtroom of our chantry judge, Oliver, Judge Oliver on Square. So it's a lesser price, the majority of this is going to go, almost four hundred thousand dollars for both jobs, so three seventy-something is the estimate. Of course, we have to have architectural plans before we know what the actual cost is going to be, because we're gonna have to put them out for bid.
Okay, so again, I'm asking for a clarification, to get the general sessions judge up and running, do we have to do all these other renovations as well?
We have to do a renovation of a courtroom, we have to build an additional courtroom in the juvenile justice center, so we can move the juvenile magistrate out of the general sessions building, so the new general sessions judge can go down there.
And we determined that's the most effective way to put this to the general sessions.
I think that's about the only way, because there's no, no place else that can truly accommodate the general sessions judge on a long-term basis.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Graves?
Mr. Poswell's confused me, if I'm gonna try. Don't read me a lot. And I agree, we need to, I think this is a good idea. I went, I was on ad hoc meeting, that went, we went to tour places I ain't never been before, hope, hope I don't go back. But there's definitely a need, and, and I think Ms. Strong's here, and I shouldn't have called her name out, but I see her sat back there, and some of the judges may be still here, I don't, maybe they live, or aren't here. Anyway, I'll get the microphone, because we all get here to go home. I think this is the best way, we're trying to prove thirty-six thousand dollars on architectural fees to do these two projects, the juvenile, juvenile courtroom, so Ms. Strong would be able to take the money there too, people won't have to go back to her, one of the offices, general sessions, pay their bills, some of them go home and don't forget to pay the bills. But anyway, I think this is a good idea, you look at about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that was approved into bonds that are close, I think it's a great idea to do it, there's definitely need for more judges, one more judge. This is the only way that I've seen that we can do it efficient for a long-term solution. The judges that can agree, Ms. Strong agreed temporarily, they'll still work with it, let's, that's, until that's done. let's, until that's done. Architectural and engineering people are too high, but they got the pencil. And that's, I just want to explain where we was at with it, myself, from my own being. And I think it's a great idea to do what we're doing. I think it'll take care of the judges, uh, the courts for a long-term solution, that maybe we won't have to look at it for a while. Added in with Mr. Oliver's need to be getting his court.
Mr. Ray, I have to make a clarification. I believe the maker of the motion for the amendment said that thirty-six thousand was five percent of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Seven, but, but the motion, but the total cost we're looking at is three hundred and sixty thousand, so I believe we're looking at ten percent. Is that correct, Mr. Holt?
That's the estimates that the architects gave me.
Correct. We're looking at three hundred and sixty something thousand as opposed to seven fifty, aren't we?
Uh, as far as construction cost, that's the estimate.
Okay, so.
Between around three hundred and seventy, something like that.
So the five percent would really only cover half of the amount that we're looking at. That's what I'm trying to make, is that if we go with this five percent motion, which is apparently what we're still, that is what we're, that only cover half the architectural fees, as far as I can tell from the discussion that's been made. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hinton.
Let me talk about architects just a bit. I, I have talked to some architects right here lately. Let me tell you how Hamilton County does it. They run ahead in the paper and says, "We'll pay three and a half percent for your architectural and engineering services. If you'd like to be part of this project, you can come by and pick up the paperwork." And they go by and pick it up for three and a half percent. Now, I know, I know that these folks are special, and I know that we can't pester them because they're, they know so much, and they're professionals, and it's, and they've got it through the courts, through the legislature, that we can't even bid their work out. But we don't have to stand there with our pockets turned upside down. You tell an architect to furnish the architectural services and the engineering services, and he's not going to draw, he's not going to draw with this thirty-six thousand dollars, you'll have an architect that'll come over and work with you and decide, design whatever you need to do. And I'm not saying cut it, I'm just saying that it don't surpass five percent. They'll do this job for five percent if they know that's all the money they're going to give you. And my, and I, I would beg you to pass this motion, and you'll find out when I'm telling you is correct.
Uh, my question is centered around the five percent. So the estimated cost of combined estimation is roughly three seventy. And the motion here is to cap the architectural and engineering fees at five percent of the total of the cost. So the three sixty is roughly nine percent of the total cost. So basically, I just want to make sure I understand what the motion is, so thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bill Tate.
I have to agree with the other commissioner that, uh, we need to put the cart before the horse. If you ask an architect, we've, we've had architects who have, who've made numerous mistakes because they were low, we lowballed, uh, in other projects we've had in our community, counting the jail for one. I'm not, I'm not interested in really looking for the cheapest deal on things when we're looking at, uh, building things, because what maybe causes problems in the later, latter. And how does, how do they know the, what the price is going to be until they get into it, start looking? I think, Commissioner, because I mean, is it correct that we, uh, maybe put the cart before the horse, they gotta put, be how person have limited up to nine, five percent of.
Mr. Ray, I just, clarification again, um, and, you know, I have to choose, maybe my coverage may be in my head, may not be right, but if we're looking at three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, five thousand of that, five percent of that is about eighteen thousand dollars. And so what we're going to be doing if we pass this amendment is limiting our appropriation for architectural fees for both that for eighteen thousand dollars, as opposed to the thirty-six we're looking at right now. We want to clarify that, I think we're not looking at thirty-six, we're looking at this amendment passes, where we can get eighteen thousand dollars with our upper limit. Okay. Uh, Mr. Holt, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. Nine, court.
Mr. Becker, last one in the queue, Mr. Becker, do you want to vote on the amendment?
So, okay, so if we make this motion, and I guess if we don't get any architectural engineering firms who want to bid for it, question, I guess we could, we could bring it back across the board and, and vote differently, right?
Okay, all right.
Yes, on the board, we have Commissioner Hinton's amendment that would set the amount at thirty-six thousand dollars over five percent of the project cost, whichever is less. All right, it's on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving sixteen affirmative, receiving fifteen affirmative votes, the amendment is approved, we're back on the main motion as amended. Okay, so, uh, let's make sure that we understand that. The amendment now says that we will reappropriating up to five percent of the cost. Is that correct?
And but it can't exceed thirty-six thousand.
That it cannot exceed. Okay. All right, on the board. Okay.
We said up to five percent, but cannot exceed thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six, yeah, go ahead. You're in the queue, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Up to five percent, we cannot exceed thirty, well, it couldn't exceed thirty-six thousand. But would you, would you change that?
You can say it backwards, I, I would correct it backwards. It will say the amount shall be engineering and architectural fees shall not exceed five percent of total project cost and shall not exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
We're in?
The resolution as amended is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-four votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving twenty-two affirmative votes, resolution is approved on first and final reading. Okay, Mr. Goode?
Commissioner, fifteen oh two dash oh three, appropriation of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the jail renovation lines that have been bid out, that is part of a grant, uh, and, and has an estimated payback as well, uh, that was discussed in the budget of roughly thirty-six months, obviously can't be exact, and that passion ends, I suppose.
Senator. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Ray. Any discussion? Is anyone in the queue, we vote on that?
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? Resolution is unanimously approved.
Okay, Mr. Goode?
Commissioner, fifteen oh two dash oh four, that had been discussed here, that was tonight, is the, uh, resolution of appropriation of three point four five for the land purchase of this school, and that's unanimous, unless.
Do we have a motion, have a second? A second for Mr. Foster. Uh, Mr. Holt, take it.
Yeah, I brought a lot of questions, I had, there's been a lot of questions already, and I'm not going to repeat a lot of those, uh, because I don't want to beat the dead horse. But I did travel out that road, and I hear about, you know, Upper Stacy Camp Creek Road. I got behind a track on that road, and you cannot even pass a track. There's going to have to be a whole lot more than a turning lane put in. I would venture to say a two-school bus meet, meets on that road now, one of them probably has to stop while the other one passes. If you know the, the width of the roads, if you travel the county, and I service that area, and so I know that road, and I know the area where the other school is, I would venture to say it's going to be a whole lot more than a turning lane on either road for either location. Because I've, I've swapped mirrors with UPS, and I've swapped mirrors with school buses, and it's expensive. So I, I rode out there, and like I said, it's, I, I don't, uh, I just don't agree with this, this land deal, it smells bad to me. And I just, it just smells bad, uh, you know, it was signed in October. And if I'm getting this, let me, I want to ask for clarification. This three point four million dollars is coming from the two thousand and fifteen bond, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
A portion. A portion.
A portion, okay, let me have the portion. Let me see the pie.
Well, no, it will come out of that. That is, that is part of the sixty-one million.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand comes from the reserve of cash.
Oh, right, that's right, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Ned of three seventy-five. Guy that gave us money and, yeah, okay.
Which is resold into payback.
Okay. Okay. So, follow my timeline, because I have. We signed an option on a property, October, whatever date, twenty-four, twenty-second, twenty-third, obligating us to a hundred thousand dollars, which I understand comes from the school. We know what the last will be when we sign the contract, obligating us to that. Well, we go out and do that, knowing we've been told, we had no way to borrow no money. We were bankrupt almost, it's about to fall off a cliff. Couldn't make payroll come July. But we go out and sign a contract in October, before the tax increase on November the third, we were pretty sure that that tax increase was going to go through. If we're signing a hundred thousand dollars, that binds you to three point four million. That's why I said it smells, and that's why I moved and we taped it.
Senator. Action. Okay, uh, we've got a motion.
I need one more.
No, it's, uh, Becker, go ahead.
Because I know terminology got messed up last week. Can someone explain to me, uh, refer versus tabling versus?
Refer. Refer or defer?
Refer, defer. Refer and table. Refer and table and Robert rules are pretty much the same thing.
We voted earlier, two different times.
Well, that was a different motion, I mean, it was a different resolution.
Yeah, but for the government, to refer and table, it's the same. So that's what I was confused about, and I'm staying.
Right, well, if one of them, if, if, if it's, and I'm going to flip my list up here. The defer is, no debate, it requires two-thirds of vote, and the refer, it debates eight. Right, and only takes thirteen.
And tables, nine of them.
Tables, nine of them. Non-abide, six, ten.
Okay, we can discuss this, sir?
No, no.
Okay, we can discuss this, so we will vote on it.
All right, motion to table, resolution fifteen oh two dash oh four is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered, anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Motion to table receives five affirmative votes, fails to carry.
Back, hold the motion. Okay, Mr. Becker, you're still in the queue, are you through?
Um, so my, my question is, and I don't know if I, so, by understanding what I've been having, is it June first or June thirtieth to add upon this?
June thirtieth.
It's June thirtieth.
But realize we've got to sell the bonds, and that, you can't just do that in ten days.
You've already voted to issue.
Right, well, once you vote, once you, once we give the people that do our bonds the go-ahead, they have to go through a process that takes thirty to sixty days, thirty being about the quickest you could possibly do it, sixty more likely. They look at the best day to sell the bonds, there's all sorts of paperwork that's involved. It's kind of like a big mortgage, there's a lot of due diligence that goes into it. So we've got to have that money to buy the property.
That's what, that's what I.
Okay, and maybe I'm not answering your question.
We vote, we voted on, we voted on the.
On the bond, right.
The two bonds already.
Right, right.
Okay, so, so we would have to need sixty days or so, like you said, after approving appropriate the three point four?
No, but you've got to have the money in place to go ahead and purchase it, and there is, you know, with the closing of the property, that's going to, while I presume all that due diligence is done, there'll be title insurance, there'll be issues like that that will have to be addressed, and so it's, it's impossible to just close that quickly also. And I may not be explaining this right very late, I apologize.
Have we not issued the bond? Wait, wait, Mr. Becker, we're questioning.
Well, I'm, 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 yeah, so we've already.
There's a double lien.
Yeah, there's a double lien.
Okay, so, okay, okay, so this, so the land, so I guess my question is, we've issued the bond, but we need, we need at least give sixty days or whatever prior to June thirtieth to appropriate the three point four.
Well, not to appropriate, but you've got to tip, as part of the option, you've got to say, "We intend to exercise the option." And then that kind of kicks into place the effort that has to be done for the deeds to be repaired, the title insurance to be brought forward, those kind of pieces that have to be part of it. So I would hate to see us put off to the last minute exercising the option, because what if, as they prepare for that, they find a mechanic's lien that needs to be taken care of by the owner? There's, there's things like that that have to be addressed. Hopefully, they've all been addressed, but you never know, until you get ready to close.
Okay, seeing no one else in the queue, remember, ready to vote. Oh, Mr. Foster, anyway, okay, thank you.
All right. All right, the resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving seventeen affirmative votes, resolution is approved on first and final reading.
Mr. Goode?
Commissioner, fifteen oh two dash oh five, uh, is a funding request of twenty-six thousand dollars for a circuit court clerk, Mrs. Strong, um, that is money that is already budgeted that she has for, that's for processing equipment that went through the budget that was announced, and that's money that she has in a fund, it's no new money, it's money that's been appropriated, money she has.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, by Mr. Marner, any comments, questions, seeing no one in the queue, let's vote.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered, anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Resolution is unanimously approved.
Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I would entertain a motion to group approve oh six and oh seven, which are all follow-through, uh, money that are already appropriated, and you have fifteen oh two dash oh six, one hundred and twenty-three, seven, seven, five, physical home and script grant, and fifteen oh two oh seven, appropriation forty-six, three, fifty for EMA.
Mr. Goode, we still have to vote twice, so what if we just, what if one of, because you have, about the group.
Fifteen oh two oh six, I have some.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. A second by Mr. Foster, put it on the board, please.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wishing to change your vote? Resolution is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I apologize for that, fifteen oh seven, fifteen oh two dash oh seven, I have some.
And we have a second, we're going to pop, uh, in discussion, seeing no one in the queue.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote.
Twenty-three votes are entered. All twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? The resolution is unanimously approved.
Motion. And that's it. We have a motion to adjourn. Don't forget, don't forget we end today at six o'clock in this room. The initial form.